Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 24th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, I understand that there are some technical broadcast problems with the hearing tonight, so I guess people at home will probably see this on a delayed basis. I think the audio is working, but the Comcast transmission has got a glitch or two. So, having said that, when people are able to see this, they'll know why they weren't able to see it live, hopefully. First item is public announcements and comments. Does anybody wish to be heard?
Just me, I guess. Stephanie Cox, Yarmouth Port. And just wanted to hand, I think that the Towne Minister is handing out a copy of an invitation that Cape Housing Institute, which in this case is being held by Housing Assistance Corporation, is putting on and would like to personally invite each of you to attend. It's November 15th, and if you may recall, the Cape Housing Institute is something that was put together the past couple of years. There were more extended seminars over weeks at a time. We kind of got the feedback from a number of public officials that that was just a lot to ask of volunteers, such as you are. So we took that feedback and really redesigned it, including a lot of the content, and put it in a one-day training session. So I just want to let you know, this is, you know, not just sort of another conference, though we do have the aspect of having, you know, someone high-profile, they'll have Secretary Kenealy. It's free to municipal officials, and we're really trying to get decision-makers like yourselves there. We're not just looking at housing through the lens of capital A affordable housing, but also just the totality of the housing market. You know, as you probably know, in the past five years, we've lost Capewide 3,000 year-round housing units and gained 5,000 seasonal ones. So as units go on the market, the people who are buying them are coming in with more, as cash buyers, and with more ability to outpace year-rounders. So we need more options for year-rounders, so we're looking at the totality of the market. We're looking at how it intersects with things like our wastewater planning. So lots of new topics, and this is really meant as a training. And lastly, I'd just say that we're hoping to have a nice cross-section of selectmen, planning board officials, ZBAs. You know, we've sent it out to towns, but any effort that you all could make and try to get more and more decision-makers there, we think it's really important for everybody here to hear all the same information. With that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I would like to invite everyone that might be listening, and certainly anyone here tonight, to the DPW Open House tomorrow night, which is September 25th, 4:30 to 6:30. It's at 507 Buck Island Road, and it's an opportunity for people to see the existing facilities and equipment in advance of the vote at town meeting on the new DPW building. And if for some reason this transmission is delayed and people hear it after tomorrow night's meeting, there'll be another open house on October 26th for those that aren't able to make tomorrow nights. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. You already did one, am I correct on that? Didn't you do one over the weekend?
Yes, that's correct. We did one on Saturday, so there's a series of three that we're doing this round.
I went to one, it was about a year or so ago. I forget, it was in the winter, I think it was in March.
That's correct. We did a couple last March.
And it was, a picture's worth a thousand words. It's a good thing to see what is being discussed on the ground, so to speak, and talk to the people who work there and
Absolutely.
Talk about problems, talk about enhancements that need to be made, improvements, equipment. I thought it was very informative, and I would encourage people to actually go to one of these sessions to see what it is, because in the abstract you hear, oh, we need a DPW building, and it's going to cost $14 million, and just doesn't have a lot of connection to people. So I would encourage people to get down there and see what is there now, and compare that to what is being proposed.
Absolutely. We have plans for the new facility to show people as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, see, Town Council's here hiding behind the pole over there, like all good lawyers, he's hiding. We have a number of matters to talk about, amendment to the no parking regulations, parking clerk discussion, and license agreement related to the Parker's River Bridge construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting today with Town Council, Phil Magnussen, myself, and Ronnie Ramirez to revisit the parking regulations that were talked about last meeting, and I think as a result of that meeting, we wanted to put in your hands tonight a revised version of the regulations that Phil has generated that makes more sense of what we voted on last week. And we also discussed the legality, I suppose, of having the easterly side of Center Street no parking at the $35 limit. We determined that that was okay to do, if you so wanted to do that as you'd voted last meeting. That's been incorporated into here as well. And so essentially, if you still want to keep that, we could post the signs soon to begin that enforcement. The other activity that we discussed was going through the parking clerk designation process, and I wanted an opportunity, I think for a lot of different reasons, it makes sense to stay with the police department, and both Phil and Jay can talk to the due process process that was brought up at the meeting last time. But in the end, if you wanted to have it stay with the clerk's office, we could make that work too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jay and for Phil.
Jay?
Yeah, so I'm more happy to respond to questions. I think there was a few issues out there, the one question regarding having the parking clerk function stay with the police department. I know there was a concern, that it seemed like it was the fox guarding the hen house, perhaps, or due process concern. Well, it's not unusual. We actually did a little bit of a survey as to what different towns do, and it's probably more common than any other agency to have the police do it. Sometimes there's a completely detached parking clerk person, but it's certainly not uncommon. It's a little less typical to have the town clerk do it, but we saw some of those examples too. So it really becomes a policy question. The due process is that they have a right to appeal if they don't like what they're getting out of the parking clerk process, which has its own hearing process, but if they were not satisfied with that, they can go to Superior Court and get review of that decision.
How much is that going to cost them?
Well, it's a certiori appeal, more or less, so it's a
Filing fee is going to be about five times the amount of the fine. More than that, probably, more than like 10 times the amount of the fine.
That would be the case, no matter where, the appeal generated from, whether it was the town clerk or just some other disinterested citizen who was appointed the clerk, the parking clerk. So that fee remains the same regardless of the review, to the extent that people might think that it's a foregone conclusion as to what the result that the police department may be. I suppose that that is a fair discussion to be had. In discussing this with Phil, he indicates that there's a fair number of examples where people have over, the process has resulted in overturning their own parking tickets issued by the town, as well as certainly a lot of circumstances where it's been upheld too. So it appears that there's been a fair review. Usually it's a pretty routine process.
I might add too, if I could, Phil had indicated too, in a further review, that the majority of tickets that are written are actually written by beach staff for beach violation-related parking, so it's not even related so much to the police-related activity.
Well, the cars aren't going to be, cars that are parked illegally out on the road aren't going to be ticketed by beach staff.
No, but they generally don't have that much activity that way.
If I may, the vast majority of our parking violations are written by Parks and Recreation. They have the power to issue citations down in the beach areas, that's where most of the parking problems are. Certainly, police officers do issue them elsewhere, but that's a minority.
And in looking at, after the meeting
Phil, wait a minute, timeout. How is somebody that's watching the beach, you can't supervise alcohol as it is, let alone cars parked out on the street. We've had this discussion before with Pat Armstrong about people drinking on the beach, people bringing in coolers, and the answer always is, I can't have people who are supposed to be focusing on the swimmers worrying about going around checking on people on the blankets.
It's not the beach dependents who are doing it, it's Dave Carlson and one of his staff, and they're out in trucks or cars circulating around the area. That's another whole subject. That's the way it's evolved. Since we no longer have police officers at the beach full-time anymore, the board has authorized certain members of that staff to issue parking tickets, and they do.
So the tickets given for mostly parking along the road leading into the beach?
It's the road, and we actually had a lot of problems this past year. It's roads leading into the beach, blocking driveways down by the beach areas, in intersections where they block with a decreased sight radius, so they cause a safety problem, or also in prohibited areas. The entirety of the north side of South Shore Drive is posted no parking, and the areas right around the intersections are also posted. So that's why in developing the beach access areas, I focused on those violations for the $35 fine, because that's the problem we have there. After the vote the last time, and I was pleased to have this off my plate, and then I went out and read the statute and looked at the procedure more, and I was more prepared to talk about fines than procedure last time, and I realized that because we shipped the payment and collection function out to the Plymouth County Parking Clerk, which does 50 towns, and it's very efficient for us to use them, most of the parking clerk's job is coordinating with them for either hearings or potential hearings. We have very few actual hearings, but if people don't pay the fine, Plymouth County sends out a notice that says you have to come to a hearing. So they have to coordinate that with whoever the hearing officer is. Ninety-nine percent of the people never show up. So most of our job as parking clerk is coordinating between Plymouth, which does the payment collection, and the hearing officer. So if the hearing officer is going to be outside the police department, it makes no sense for the police chief to be the parking clerk. If the town clerk were to be the hearing officer, he should also be the parking clerk, so he can coordinate the hearings direct with the Plymouth County Parking Clerk.
I'm confused. Plymouth, so I get a ticket, and I don't agree with it. So do I notify the Plymouth County that I'm appealing, or do I notify the local police in your example?
Initially, to the, your red, says right on the face of the ticket, you notify the local police. If you don't respond at all and don't pay, then you would get essentially coordination through Plymouth.
That's if I don't?
Yeah, they do like the big batch processing of multiple violations there.
So the notice goes out from Plymouth, and the person doesn't show up, what happens then?
Then Plymouth reports it to the Registry of Motor Vehicles as an unpaid ticket, and if you have, I think, more than three, you get a do not renew on your registration of your license from the registry. So when you go to renew, then you have to go back and square away the tickets before you can renew.
Okay, so now locally, I get the ticket, and I want to, I don't agree with it. I don't think I was parked illegally. So what do I, under this proposal, what do I do then?
Well, the current practice is that you can ask for a hearing from the parking clerk, which is the Yarmouth Police Department, and you go in, you talk to Colleen who handles the hearings. That's your first instance. If you fail to do anything and don't pay, then you get a notice, and the notice says you have to go to a hearing. And Plymouth sends out that notice, they coordinate with us, they say, when do you want us to schedule the next 20 hearings? Because they have to put a time and a date on it. Realistically, almost no one actually shows up for the hearings, but they still have to coordinate a time to schedule it in case someone does show up.
And that's a local hearing.
Why does a hearing get scheduled if the person does nothing? It would seem to me that with a ticket, it's incumbent upon the person to get the ticket if they
That's the statutory scheme.
It's a failsafe, Mike, as far as I can tell. I had this kind of the same concern, if you already blew it by not responding, why do you get the right for a hearing? I think that goes essentially to the due process part of it. It's a second bite at the apple to have a hearing on it and have it reviewed. And then failing that, then the registry finds out. Now, if you appear and are dissatisfied with the results, they uphold the ticket in whole or in part, then you have the right of appeal there to the Superior Court.
This is not our question.
What a several hundred dollar filing fee for a $35 ticket.
You could have 10 tickets too. I mean, it could be ticketed several times in a, so, but you're right. But people do appeal tickets out of principle. It is not uncommon.
The chief has authorized me to say that we are not looking to hang on to this function. It makes a lot of sense for us to do it, it's worked so far, and there's reasons why the police department is a good place to have the hearings, because we have people who are familiar with the roads, we have the ability to go out and have someone check to see how wide the road is, see whether the sign's in place, things like that. So we have the ability to handle them, but we're not looking to hang on to this function if you want to delegate it to someone else. And Barnstable, it goes to the Planning and Development Department.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the parking regulations as presented tonight and leave the function as it is with the police department. I think it works. If there should come a time where it no longer works, or your concerns, you know, come to fruition, at this point in time, we've never had any problems. I feel that they give a fair, there's a fair process in place. My only concern is I really don't think these fines go far enough, but it's a start.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, anybody want to be heard on?
I have no comments. No, I support the motion.
The only thing is, is there's a question mark in here.
Yes, I was going to address that. When I drafted this, I didn't know what your decision was going to be.
Well, it's from Center Street to
So it would have to be after Beachwood Road, comma, the east side of Center Street from Gray's Beach to Homer's Dock Road, eliminate the question mark.
Correct.
And you'd want to fill in the chief of police in paragraph number one where there's a blank.
Correct.
And the other thing I want to bring to your attention is that when I presented it to the board last time, it was apparently confusing as to what fines applied where. So I reorganized it, I've left the substance the same, but reorganized it and put in paragraph two, which makes it clear that all the regular fines apply everywhere but where the beach access fines apply.
Thank you, Phil.
I guess I only have, you know, Tracy mentioned concerns about the, some of the fines. I'm just looking down the list, particularly on item six, parking within 10 feet of a hydrant, blocking a fire exit or fire lane, dropping down below, parking on a sidewalk, parking on a crosswalk. You know, I think there's more to those in terms of public safety issues, that to me, those in particular, and there may be others, but those in particular are bothersome to me at that level.
I discussed this with the chief, he felt that the $20 fine was inadequate deterrent. I also want to point out that these are the fines that apply to state highways under a state regulation. So what we've done is we've copied the state regulation and applied it to the town.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm opposed, so it's a three to one vote. Thank you. So I guess the next one is license agreement?
Yeah, the next one, Kathy Williams, has some details. She's been working with Jay on a license agreement to facilitate Parker's River Bridge replacement.
Good evening. I think, as you all know, we had been talking for a little while of the work zone for the Parker's River Bridge is so confined, the contractor really needs a place to have their staging and their storing their equipment and whatnot, and the drive-in site has been seen as a potential location for that. They submitted an application for use of town-owned land and identified the areas that they were looking at, and it's included in your packet. Town staff met, we had a wide variety of input from town staff from planning, conservation, DBW, police, fire, DNR, and health department to kind of look over that request and make up some conditions and some recommendations that they would like incorporated into the licensing agreement. And what you see here in your packet also is a draft of that licensing agreement that outlines those requirements. It also included some great things from Jay with regard to insurance, indemnifications, but we also wanted to be sure, some of the other conditions from staff is making sure that the property is accessible, at least a large portion of it, for special events that we want to have on the property, and also some requirements of how we would like to see the area restored upon completion of that work. The applicant has, the applicant is MIG Corporation, who's received the contract for Parker's River Bridge. They wanted to have the license through January of 2022, which is when they think they'll be completed with the bridge. It is going to be a two-year project, because we need to construct one half of the bridge at a time. There's also some requirements in here with regard to the health department for fueling and containment, as well as a de-watering plan. There's also in the back here, the plan showing the area of the drive-in site that would be utilized for staging, as well as the remaining area that would be open for special events.
Make a motion that we support the licensing agreement and authorize either the chairman or the Towne Minister to sign it on our behalf.
I'll second them.
Okay, so they're going to operate just to store equipment, basically, right?
They're very limited on what they can store here, and it's in the actual licensing agreement. Near Route 28 would be their office trailer, and they would probably also have some portable toilets behind that, and then the larger area in the back would be for staging, stockpiling, and materials and equipment storage. One of the things that the contractor did ask was that no fee be required for this, because it is a town project, and they did also note that they did not feel that any type of security deposit was required, because there's already a bond on the project, just to clarify that. There is some language with regard to that in the licensing
This is usually fairly standard. I'm surprised to even see a license agreement. I mean, usually it's just, they're just allowed to do it. So I think that this is great.
Okay, so we have a motion to support this in a second.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long, can you restate the timeframe that we're talking about?
It's basically immediately through January of 2022.
Okay. Is this going to have an impact on other people being able to utilize the site for concerts, shows, or whatever?
One of the provisions of the license is that they would coordinate with the town and event sponsors to allow for access for the remainder of the site. Most of those activities happen on the weekend, and they're not working on the weekend, but we did include some information here to just let him know, MIG Corporation, that the property may require some setup and breakdown during the weekday for the event, special events.
So the contractor is well aware of that, and is willing to work with the town, so that if we do need to make an accommodation for some festival or some other event that's there, that that's not going to be a problem?
I think he would then be contained to his particular area, which I'm sure he would also want to secure, and have, yes, fencing around that particular area.
Well, the fencing is quite extensive.
Oh, no, it's not the red line, it's the, that's the event space from the standard event. It's the blue line, the encroachment area, encroachment area two, which is the triangle, and encroachment area one, which is near Route 28. Yeah, no.
I think I'm getting colorblind. Yeah, okay. Very good. That answers my question. Thank you.
Did you get any input from the drive-in site utilization committee?
Yes, we did. One of their, obviously their concerns is they just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be interfering with their special events on the site, and I think we've done everything we can to accommodate the contractor's needs and also accommodate the special events on the site.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Did you second the motion?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously.
Does this mean that Mr. Knappick can sign it?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're done.
I guess the next one is the DY update.
Yeah, I added that to the agenda in case you wanted to discuss the three-town partnership meeting that was held last Thursday.
All four of us were there with representatives of Dennis and Harwich, and also staff from the various towns, and also Tim Whalen, and a representative from Senator Sears' office, and others, to talk about the Dennis-Harwich-Yarmouth partnership agreement. And actually, the presentation that we got to prepare for the meeting was probably more in-depth than the one that they gave at this meeting, which was good, because it's always nice to know that when we're getting briefed, that we're getting a pretty comprehensive recitation of what's going on. Harwich is already partnering in part with Chatham for some of their searing, and they seem to be, the questions from the public that I saw coming actually exclusively came from Harwich people, and they didn't seem to understand a lot of the details, and I think I talked to Norm a little bit after the meeting and others, and I think that all of us have to do a good job with public outreach, but I think in Harwich in particular, if those questions were representative of the public at large, and that's hard to know, they seem in particular to have a lot of work to do there. Do we, I don't know if it really pays at this point, I'll defer to the board to get into all the specifics of what's envisioned in the partnership agreement, other than the talking generalities, because that will be covered hopefully in future outreach meetings. But I think it's going to be a challenge really to get the public to be aware of the specifics of the project in terms of the capital outlay, the operational costs, what savings are to be gained by having a regional solution, what funding opportunities may be there based on a regional solution, and grants versus going it alone, which is another alternative to have a treatment facility on Buck Island Road and have Yarmouth run its own treatment plant, which it's anticipated will cost more money in terms of the operational costs, certainly. Where that's the big savings apparently from a regional approach is not so much on the capital outlay, but on the operational costs, several million dollars a year, so that's just a quick response to the meeting. I don't know if the others want to add to that. Mark, do you have anything further?
Well, what I'd like to see, I'm going to limit my comments mostly to process. I would like to see us sort of figure out amongst ourselves, with Dan and Rich, sort of what our timeframe is, because we're going to have to make a decision on the agreement, and I think there's an expectation that we should come together and have a recommendation in December. So the question I think we have to ask ourselves is what will the board find sufficient in terms of briefings, discussions, before making our own decision in terms of going forward with the agreement? I definitely want to hear from the Water Resources Advisory Committee. I know they've spent some time on this. I think it'd be helpful for us to have a conversation with them about this. I think one of the things that we're going to have to be cognizant of is how this fits in with with what we have coming up at the Fall Town Meeting with the DIF. I think people are going to be interested in knowing how some of these things tie together. So I think the board needs to be briefed on that, so. But we should at least try to shoot for creating a deadline for ourselves. But I think what I would recommend as an agenda item is maybe just having a frank discussion amongst ourselves as to what some of the key questions are. What are the factors that will influence our decision? I've heard some commentary that perhaps the amount of savings here in Yarmouth is in question. They, there's some that would like to see a larger amount of money being saved for a regional facility. I've heard that. I've also heard concern about the size of the board. So there may be an opportunity for us to maybe not only talk about, identify the issues amongst ourselves, but then have a conversation maybe with the Water Resources Advisory Committee and staff over their commentary, their, what recommendations they have. You know, to what degree might there be potential for additional savings? So I think what we need to do is identify a timeframe and maybe identify a couple of meeting dates where we can go over our own questions, review them, discuss them with Dan and staff, and have some informed discussion from the committee because they, they're certainly spending a lot more time on this question than, than maybe we are. The agreement itself overall, I don't think is that complicated. There are just a few aspects of it that require some significant discussion. I'd also like to think that, let's assume that we all come together and we work out and we hammer this out. We're all in agreement. Then I think the other question is sort of the outreach. I think the outreach, I think, can be improved, and the public information out on this can be certainly much better. And so I think there's, that's, that's a work in progress. I know Rich is working on that. There are others that are working on that. I know our, the three, this has come up in our three-town discussions about having more resources made available for someone to handle public outreach and public information. And so I'm not going to sort of steal their thunder, but I think, I think there's growing recognition that we need to do more in terms of public information and awareness, particularly on this, this part of the overall project. So, so those are, those are some of my initial thoughts on, on, on this subject, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I agree with Mark on a number of the points that he's brought up. I, I have, I want to come back to the public communication part of it because I think that that's a very significant issue. I do want to see a presentation from our consultant with regard to how we came up with the projected gallons that our community is going to use in this partnership. I'd, I'd like to see a detailed calculation of that. I want to know that the projected capacity that we're going to be utilizing is reasonably accurate and that we're not relying totally on his expertise, one person's expertise in coming up with our participation. Since we're going to be contributing fifty.
Five.
Fifty-five percent of the total, I think we ought to know the details of exactly how that calculation is, is occurring. I am also concerned about the pace. I, I think that we've got to be very cautious about being, that our, that our pace is at the slowest participating community's pace and, and is constantly delayed by one more issue. And, and I think we've got to identify a pace that we're comfortable with. And if, if we need, you know, seeing the reactions very honestly and very frankly at the meeting last week, it, it seemed that Harwich residents had some significant concerns, a lack of information, and, and were looking for a lot more details. I think our community will also, but, but I think that, you know, what I was reading into that is that maybe Harwich is, is a ways behind in their readiness to move ahead. And maybe we ought to be thinking about a secondary agreement that is Dennis-only with a future possible buy-in from Harwich and see how that would affect, whether we can, we can accomplish that within an agreement. And I'm just laying out concerns. I'm not dictating anything at this point.
No, but that becomes, that becomes the next logical question if Harwich, because Harwich has already started their searing.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
In fact, I think part of the confusion from some of the Harwich residents in the audience was the, the schematization of this project was laid out in phases, phase one, phase two, et cetera. And they've already done phase one in Harwich by partnering with Chatham. So the consultant was trying to say to them, well, for you, phase two is phase one.
Yeah.
And that seemed to generate, I mean, it's, it's not a huge transition really logically to fathom that, but it seemed to bother the people there.
Right.
They seemed confused.
Right, yeah. And you would think, particularly since they've begun the wastewater treatment process in Harwich and connecting with Chatham, that they'd be at a point where this second step would be, would be even easier. But I don't know. It, it didn't come across that way. Maybe it was just a confusion being created by the terminology.
No, I, I too had some concern about what the commitment level was. But again, we don't know with a small sample of people asking questions if that was representative of the community at large. I'm concerned about it if it is.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
The third area that I would raise is, and one that I would like to see followed up on is with regard to our, the weighting of the participation in the governing committee. And I, I think we need to have a weight that is based upon our 55% share. So if we have three representatives or four representatives, that's fine. But their votes should total 55% of the total. And, and similarly, you know, if, you know, one community is 15% and they've got two representatives, that's fine. They're worth seven and a half percent of each.
Okay, so that's like the commission. That's, that's how they do it.
Right, right.
Weighted voting.
And I just think that that's, that's something that our communities, our, our residents should feel that they're fully represented in this process. So I'd like to see some follow-up discussion on that. The last thing is public communication. And I think if we need to hire a public relations representative or if we've got to hire, find out how much it would cost to send out, we've got 11,000 households, roughly 18,000 voters. If we put a, you know, an explanatory document, one or two-page document in each person's hands, how much would it cost us to do that, to get this out? And I think that that's the sort of thing that needs to be sooner rather than later so that people's awareness is immediately drawn to this and so that they have something in front of them and that when they come to public meetings, they're aware that this is a hot topic. It's, it's thing, something that is critical to the community and that we're, this select board is working on and that they can expect to be asked to participate in other meetings so that they can be brought up to speed. But, but I think that unless we provide every household with some, some basic information about what is going on, I, I think we're doing a disservice to the community. I've been asked by people that I thought were very sophisticated in, in knowledge and awareness of what was going on in the community. And I've been asked, what's going on with wastewater? And this was just last week. So and that's after articles in the newspaper. And, you know, I, I just, that's very frustrating to me. And I, I think, you know, we need to do something about it. And we need to, you know, I, I think we've got to include the expense in, in the work that, or in the, part of the expenses that the, the grants cover so that we get this done and get in front of people adequately. So I, I think a, a written communication to the community is, would not be a waste of money. I think that it would be a kickoff for further communication and more awareness of, of what information is available.
I think that's a great point. And, and I think you'd agree, we're not trying to take anything away from the, the very good outreach efforts that are already underway. This is just, I mean, people, I agree with you. I talked to some people that really are very intelligent people and generally well-informed, but they do not seem to have a real grasp of what's going on with the wastewater. So I agree that, you know, your, your suggestions could help go a long way in terms of getting that information out to people.
Yeah, thank you.
Tracy?
Well, I'm not going to reiterate everything that's been said, but the tri-town meetings that we have should focus specifically on the agreement. I think each town needs to do their own education. Having that much information when we're all at different stages, different funding, it's way too confusing for people. So I'm not sure that was really beneficial exercise. We didn't hash out any of the things as the three towns needed to talk about at that meeting. So that's disappointing because I think that was a good opportunity for us to be having a dialogue amongst the specifics because we keep moving the goalposts here. We're not getting to a point where we can agree on something. So that brings me to the next point is how do we educate the public when we haven't really come up with a plan first? I think that we need to work quickly to come up with our own plan, but there's nothing worse than putting out bad information. So, you know, and, and also it brings me back to where we were before. I, I do think when we have a plan and we're ready to hit the road with it, I think what they've done so far has been fabulous because they've talked somewhat in generalities and getting people's awareness peaked. But I think sharing the website with people so as we develop. But right now, I think there's more questions than answers. And I'd be afraid of, of confusing the public. So I think we need to get on the same page, and then once we are, we need to forge forward. My concern, what I was going to say before, is going back to the previous vote that we had, we had been criticized heavily on shoving things down their throat. And so I think we need to be careful that people don't feel that way. I mean, as far as information goes, I think that's important to put out. But I, I'm concerned about hiring somebody at this point in time. Let's just say that.
I think, Tracy, your remarks kind of tie together what Mark and, and what Norm have both said. I think Mark's agreeing with you, saying we need to get a timeframe to get this information and establish a position.
We, I don't think any of us are sold on the numbers yet that we've been presented in the tri-town thing. And if I remember correctly, Dan and Rich were going to work on that, hone it. I know Norm would like the flow numbers. I personally would like the numbers behind, you know, I know I talked to Rich about it at the tri-town thing. I'd like to see what, what that looks like. You know, we get one number. I don't know, I would like to see the details behind that. So I know that there's some things that they're going to work on and get back to us with a recommendation. And I think once that recommendation's been made, you know, those points that Norm brought up about the weighted stuff, you know, it's unfortunate because we've, we've been at this already two years. So to go back, I think it's going to be difficult now, but we, we need to keep pushing forward and working issues. That would have been something that would have been great while the three boards were there to have a discussion on, but there wasn't really an opportunity for it, so.
I think what Norm's suggesting makes a lot of sense. I think, however, from looking at it from the other towns' point of view, right now they're proposing three representatives from Yarmouth and two from Dennis and two from Harwich. They're going to say, well, if you get weighted voting and you get 55% of the vote, what's the point of having a vote? Yarmouth will just dictate what is going to happen because they have the controlling vote. So I think you're going to get a lot of resistance there, although, you know, the commission does weighted voting certainly. And there is, there is a lot of logic to, behind saying that if you're paying 55% of the bill, why should you get less than 55% of the say? But I, I would anticipate, and I'm not challenging your, your reasoning there, Norm. I'm just saying from, from a political standpoint, I think we're going to get a lot of resistance on that.
Well, I, I understand that and can certainly see why there might, might be some resistance. But on the other hand, it was only two months ago that Dennis insisted that we have a, a drawn-out process for approving every annual budget. And we had to come back to this board during that time period to okay that. So I, I don't think anything's over until it's over. And we, we just saw in the last discussion of this a couple of weeks ago that our percentages have increased. And I think the time is, is, is very appropriate. 55%, we ought to be asking for greater representation. And, you know, I just, I'm not trying to dismiss other communities' concerns. I think that the, every part of the agreement where a majority vote is, is called for or is, is allowed can, can be changed to require two-thirds, if that's necessary. I mean, you know, so because we have 55% doesn't mean that on every critical issue we would be able to use that 55% to get everything passed. If, if there's a two-thirds requirement, it would require another community to, to agree. So, so I think it's, it's a matter of what each particular section of the agreement calls for. So, but my point is, one person, one vote. We should, our community should, should insist on that principle. One person, one vote. And we should have the representation on that, that committee in accordance with, with that principle. And I, I think that's the way we should go.
You know, to Mark's point too about the percentage, I think that I'm, have to say that I'm, once I see the numbers, I think maybe I'd feel more confident in the percentage. But I, I do think based on our experience, and this is, it's not saying it's a great project to regionalize, but, but at what percentage is that, you know, that worth it? And I don't even think that's a discussion for us. I think it's a, more of a community discussion because, you know, obviously it's a lot of money, no matter what percentage it is. 1% is a lot of money. But, you know, I, I guess I'm hesitant based on what we've been through before. And so, and based on the past few contracts that have come out that have been many percentages or a few percentages, I should say, over the estimate, that percentage could decrease very quickly. So say we enter into an agreement thinking we're going to save 10% and, you know, the project costs five more percent than projected, then we're down to 6%. I know Rich's argument was we'd be paying it anyway whether we did it ourself or not, but that's where my mind is, so.
Contract escalation will, the costs will be there whether we do a regional solution or a Yarmouth-only solution. That's for sure. Nothing's going to go down. Anyone else? I think that Norm's point- I think to Norm's point, we have to nail down the methodology for these calculations on our projected shares of this treatment plant and the operational costs of this treatment plant and get a detailed analysis of how those numbers are arrived at. Also, Norm, would that apply to the recent increases in those numbers for projected development?
Well, it would apply, no, I wouldn't do that. But also to how were the gallons, volume for the other communities calculated? Do we have a level of confidence that those numbers are accurate as well?
Okay.
Is the same methodology followed, or did just, you know, somebody raise their hands and say, "Well, we'd like X number of gallons." I mean, what was the, what was the method of determining that projection?
Each town calculated their own gallons, is that correct, Dan?
Yes, I believe it, the, each, the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth added a little bit more based on their economic analysis, but essentially, it was derived, the base consumption was derived from the raw water meter rates that went on with the people and the meters in the proposed sewer districts. And then there was some X variable associated on top of that, I believe, Jeff, if I'm not correct.
When you talk about the proposed sewer districts, are you talking about all of the phases?
Those phases, yes.
All of, what, there are eight phases?
They identified the watersheds and then the phases, yeah.
There's four, and the first one that we're talking about at the plant, though, right? On tri-town?
Sure, to answer Dan's question real quickly, it's actually a slight reduction based upon outdoor water use. They don't just take all the water use, it's actually a slight reduction. Usually, it's 90% of the water usage is what you base for your sewer flows. But it is based, in all three communities, on the water usage, correct?
Did that exclude the golf courses?
We couldn't make it one conversation without the golf.
Yes. Again, the plan is to exclude that exterior water use and only what would be used and go through a sewer system.
Okay.
And that's an entirely another conversation that some communities have to talk about because some allow dual metering for outdoor water usage, correct? And some do not.
That's correct. Each community has to decide which way they want to go with that, absolutely.
But we can certainly, at a future meeting, have the consultant come in and explain in detail how these calculations were done. We had a presentation on that some time ago. But that's certainly, as we're getting close to the point where we're needing to go public with much more specific information, that's something good to get out and memorialize in the public conversation.
How did we separate out our outdoor water usage from our indoor water usage? How did we arrive at that 10% discount?
That's just typical engineering industry standard calculation. At this point, we don't have a separate metering system, so there had to be some assumptions made.
What I think we might want to do, if we're going to have the consultant come back on that issue, is to find out what other questions that we have that we want them to come back on. Get those questions consolidated and give them to them in advance and say, "We'd like you to come in, and we got these five areas," or whatever.
In the meantime, we'll go back to the main DHY sub-working group with some of this feedback and get that out into that conversation realm so that those folks can take it back to their individual towns, and we can eventually get some feedback on that. So, that'll occur right away.
And back to Mark's point, I think we're going to have to get some kind of a timetable in mind. Did you say we're supposed to be making that recommendation by December?
December.
So, I think we probably-
So, there's not much time left.
No, and plus, we need to at least get back with the, going back to Tracy's point about the select boards needing to engage with one another. And, you know-
Probably need to have a meeting.
At least one or two meetings of that sort, I would think.
I think what Tracy was saying is that, I think she was saying that it was not beneficial to have the select boards discussing all of the towns' levels of participation in this without really having the opportunity to have each town look at their own numbers, their own costs, their own advantages and disadvantages to go in. And maybe I misunderstood her, but I think she was talking about breaking out the Yarmouth component of that and having more in-depth discussion, which I think makes a lot of sense.
It's not helpful for any of our people to watch a presentation that talks about how Dennis is going to fund theirs and how they're doing bedments in Harwich. It's not, it's not productive, it's confusing.
Or how they want their, a member of their finance committee on the board.
Well, I think, if I may, the, really what it'll end up coming down to is the boards discussing these elements of the agreement that will likely be sticking points, that we'll just need to hash out face-to-face amongst each other, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, the meeting, I think, that we had kind of turned into a Harwich-only meeting. And, and it's not to criticize the whole thing, it's just, I'd kind of like to see, if we're going to have a meeting of the select boards, we have a roundtable so that everybody's facing each other, can, feels comfortable communicating over ideas.
To that point, I think we can agree that what we can do is propose to the larger group that the boards come together, and we do it by breaking out and going through the agreement and coming to terms on the things that we are in agreement on, and then spending the majority of time on the things that we're in disagreement, so that we can walk out of the room with a deal or whatnot, you know?
That sounds like a good process.
Can we make that our second, our, I think that's great, but I think first, it would be nice to have your recommendation, the diving into the numbers and our confidence in that first, and then go to that meeting, for me personally.
Understood, yeah.
No, I agree.
I will say, having been part of this for a long time, something has gone off the rails a little bit in Harwich, I think is fair to say, that they had a lot of momentum on this topic early on. And I do know that they, the group that was originally set up to go over this, their Water Resources Group, has been, from what I understand, disbanded, and some of the finance committee members haven't been, is up to speed on it. So, I think they've got some internal challenges, and I'm not sure if it's related to the heavy cost escalation that occurred in some of their sewer phases early on. I think that was taking them aback a bit, to the, almost to the point where, like, people just, we want to put the brakes on until we get this thing done over on the east side of town, you know? So, we'll try to find out a little bit more detail. But they clearly, we have, I think, overlapped them a little bit in pacing now on this topic. Yeah.
Well, and it's not, it's not because of lack of commitment from the community.
No, understood, no, yeah.
Because their community, I think, at large, has-
Taken some big votes.
Big votes.
No question, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the pace of this has also been affected by the pace of the legislation. I think we had thought, and maybe those were maybe expectations that we should not have inflated or escalated, but I think we had all been-
I don't think we would have been ready for it, anyway. I mean, even if it was done now, we still have the same-
No, I understand, I understand. But I think to some degree, the pace, had the legislation been approved by now, I think the pace of things might have been, might have been different. That's all I'm suggesting. I don't want, I don't want people to be, that this is a criticism, that the pace isn't, the pace is being measured up against the pace of the legislation. I think there's been a concern, at least in a couple of towns, that we can't get too far ahead of ourselves in terms of moving this all along. So, this is the challenge when you get three towns engaging in a partnership and a conversation about how to do this and how it works. But I think what we're being told right now, what we were told the other night, is that the legislation should be done this year. And to me, there's nothing about the proposal that would suggest that it couldn't be done. I know that, I know they have a lot going on, but this is, this is the kind of thing, this should, this should not take longer than November, December to get, to finish, you know? And I think the question we have to ask ourselves, do we need to spend a little bit of time there, you know, having a delegation from each of the three towns, meeting with committee members, you know, in the Senate to help move it along there? Sometimes, sometimes just showing up and setting up meetings and showing a commitment and an interest can make a difference. So, I think that's another thing that we might want to think about doing as a board and as a group, is offering to join with a delegation with the other towns, Dennis and Harwich, to go there and talk to legislators, particularly the, we're, right now, it's in a Senate committee, and it might be helpful to meet with the committee chair and staff and see what the holdup is, see if we can kind of nudge this thing along. I'd prefer to be doing something along those lines as well, while we're coming together and lining up the questions that we have amongst ourselves that we can sort through and get answers to. So, I'd put that out there. And maybe that comes up in our next DHY meeting, Dan?
It could. I do know Senate Council had some really minor commentary on the legislation. It's been addressed. Jay's got a copy of it. KP Law went over it. So, we weren't expecting Senate Council to have any commentary on the legislation, but apparently, they did. And in the end, I think it's really minor to the point where it's not slowing anything down, but it was just another step we needed to get over, and they just heard back from the town councils that they're good with that change and keep moving, keep moving. So, just lawyers, you know?
All right.
I'll check in with the staff.
So, do we have enough guidance for, for the team? Do you have enough guidance?
No.
What we need to do is, any other questions or issues that we need to discuss or get clarified, we need to get that information to you right away.
Yeah.
And so, one of us, someone has to reach out to Eric to make sure that we've got a handle on his questions and concerns so that we can, we can do that as well.
I can talk to Eric.
Okay. Yeah, we should give ourselves a deadline. So, if, you know, I'd like to think that we've been at this enough so that it doesn't take too long to get something to Dan.
So, I think, I think there's two, there's the technical questions that Norm has brought up about computations and methodologies that are involved. And I think the other thing we have to do is get the questions we have about the agreement. And we have to do that as a board.
Right.
With whatever information we need from staff or the consultant. And then consolidate those questions, and then sit down with the other groups and tell them what our concerns are.
I should, yeah.
Right? I don't think we should probably have a ton of them. I think there are some major points, some of which have been discussed here tonight. But you raised another interesting point, Norm, about the weighted voting, and I didn't think of that, and that is that you could have certain issues not be predicated on a simple majority vote, but a two-thirds vote or whatever other percentage you want.
Or the weighting could occur, relate only to certain provisions.
Right.
You know, you know, there's, there's ways of doing that, and I haven't thought that through totally, but, you know, it might, might be worthwhile to look at that and say, "Okay, when, you know, where is it important to us to have the full weight of our percentage of the gallons in this?" So.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Sure.
While we have Town Council in attendance and being respectful of his time, I'd like to have on the agenda item, the election warrant brought up, just so you can review it while the council's here, and also the town meeting warrant, which I have a copy of for your review.
Okay.
Is that in our packet?
No, I have, the election warrant is, and the town meeting warrant is coming out to you right now. On the election warrant, we discussed with the clerk today, the ballot question language.
Yep.
That's in your packet. This language was generated by Bond Council, a very respected entity amongst municipalities. We had a conversation related to whether or not to put in the dollar value proposed while we were there, and the question came to us from Bond Council with location to have a dollar value put in there, but further review of the statute indicates that on this type of debt borrowing, you didn't necessarily have to. So, Jay and I just wanted to review that with you as it relates to the upcoming election.
Want to go over that, Jay?
Yeah, obviously, there's some value to putting the dollar amount in because it really lets the voters know what they're voting on. There are other ways to alert them to the dollar value, such as an explanation accompanying the vote, the same way you might see in a referendum petition that shows up on the ballot. The curious thing about debt exclusions and overrides is the form of the ballot question is actually the opposite of what you would think. You would think on overrides, operating overrides, you would just, you wouldn't have to put in a dollar amount, and that on debt exclusions, because it's a specific amount of money, you would, but the opposite is true. You have to put in the dollar amount in the operating override, even though it kind of gets buried in the budget and the levy limit floor, but for debt exclusions, you don't technically have to. I don't think there's a penalty or a prohibition on putting the value in, especially whereas here, the dollar amount actually serves to describe, help describe what the debt exclusion is a little bit. And if Bond Council approves it, then I don't have an objection to it. That said, you don't have to have it in there. It's really just the permission to exceed the levy limit. It is not the appropriation itself that will happen at town meeting. This is just the permission to borrow outside of the levy limit.
But being, being in the ballot, I mean, if the dollar amount is there, it defines the amount.
Up to.
It does, but that's not what the ballot question is for, technically. Technically, the dollar amount's already been taken care of at town meeting. The ballot is just allowing you to go outside of the levy limit. That said, again, there's value in having it there, either in the ballot question itself because people look down and say, "Oh, I know exactly what I'm voting on," or you have the right in the ballot itself to have a short explanation as to what people are voting on to a certain degree. It might be easier to do it in one step and just include it. I'm just suggesting to you, you don't have to. But the Bond Council has approved it with that, the dollar amount in, and I see no reason not to include it if that's what you want to do to help the voters understand what they're voting on.
So, the dollar amount's nailed down at town meeting and cannot be changed?
That's correct. That's the appropriation.
Right.
But you could do a town meeting article that says "up to," so-
You cannot.
I thought that that's how we had done it before.
Well, that's what the article says, but the actual appropriation itself will be specific.
Okay.
Okay, so we have this specific appropriation that's locked in a town meeting, and then the question is only whether that defined amount is included on the ballot question or not.
Well, so-
It's not going to change in any way.
Town meeting gives you the authority to borrow as up to a certain amount. You may not ultimately use all that money, and you could rescind some of that borrowing authority later, but that's what it gives. The ballot question, and then that town meeting vote will say contingent upon passage of a proposition two and a half debt exclusion. That'll be in the motion. The debt exclusion question on the ballot is really just for the purpose of letting the people, the voters of the town, make a decision as to whether or not they want to be taxed beyond Proposition Two and a Half for a specific project. You have to describe the project, but you already did the dirty work, so to speak, at town meeting where you actually did the dollar amount.
So, if they're paying attention at town meeting, they'll know what that amount is. And if they didn't pay attention at town meeting, they'll have no clue what they're voting for.
Correct. Wouldn't, stands to reason why would they come and vote for, for something necessarily, but yeah, people do show up. So, again, there is no, I have no quarrel, provided that Bond Council has no quarrel with including that in, because it is, you do have to describe what it is that you're excluding from the debt, and the fact that one of those descriptors is, the dollar amount is, does not appear to be prohibited. It's not required, but it's not prohibited, so.
This would go out in a notice, a legal notice.
Yes.
With, with or without a dollar amount, as we decide.
Correct.
And, but in the legal notice, if we decided to put in the dollar amount, at least saying to the people, here's what is coming up in a vote.
Yeah, again, I think it was Dan's feeling, and I think it's an appropriate one, that why not put it in there? If it's, it helps inform the voters either positively or negatively on the project, then I think that, that could only be a good thing.
Well, again, has a comment.
Just as a point of historical reference, I think what we did with the Cape Tech and the DY votes is we didn't put the amount in.
Those are different, though.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
I think, just a historical reference of where we got to here. So, I think you weren't really happy about that. I think you had preferred that the amount be on there, even though, say, in the DY vote- vote, it was on the second ballot. So when I gave it to Bond Counsel, I went ahead and put the amount in there. And then they went through the language to make sure that it was appropriate so that we could actually borrow, because we don't want to actually do something that wouldn't allow us to go back and then borrow the funds. So this was a reaction to, you know, your thoughts based on how we had handled ballots in the past. So that was kind of something I threw in, but this is clarification that it's not needed and it wasn't needed in the case of the DY and some of the other votes. So it's your preference, what you think is most appropriate.
Now, I would expect you're going to get more people vote at the ballot than you're going to get at town meeting.
Yes, that's.
So maybe.
That is historically the case.
Yeah, historically true.
Substantially more, usually.
Yep.
So people might say, if they don't know how much money's involved, they might take the line of least resistance and say, I'm not going to vote for this because I don't know how much it's going to cost.
Or the alternate could be true as well.
It could be. Depends what you think is a lot of money.
Yeah. What is the dollar amount?
Well, so that's a discussion topic for tonight is to decide if you want to go this route, you would want to decide tonight on that dollar amount. We have, Ed sent out a memo to you a couple of days ago outlining a few options associated with it. Also tonight, Ed has some projections, some borrowing projections that will help before you make a decision if you want to provide any pay down opportunity. I personally, when I was discussing it with Jay, I mean, it's a big dollar value this town has undertaken, and I think there's a certain fiscal transparency that the board has liked to seen since I've been here, for sure. And this is just another way to reinforce letting people know that this is what you're voting for, and frankly, this is how much it's going to cost.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a couple of questions? First of all, as far as the wording goes on here, it says Department of Public Work, Garage and Office Space to be located at 507 Buck Island Road, 507 Buck Island Road. So that needs to be taken out. And then the last, very last sentence on the first page, it says the Yarmouth Register or the Cape Cod Times at 14, seven days before. What does that mean?
14 days before, I believe it is.
Well, yeah, so the last sentence, Tracy's right.
There's a typo there where it says how much lead time you have to give also by publication Yarmouth Register or Cape Cod Times. It's either 14 days or seven days before the time of the meeting. What's the legal requirement on publication?
For the town meeting itself?
This is the warrant.
No, this is on the town election notice, on the ballot question.
I believe, well, there's 35 days lead time for you to call for the election, but it's 14 days.
This is the newspaper notification.
This is the publication. It says at the end of it that, as Tracy's pointed out, it's talking about posting it in four public places. And then it says, and also by publication in the Yarmouth Register or Cape Cod Times at 14, then the next word is seven days before the time of holding of said meeting is aforesaid. So it is, it's one or the other.
I think 14 and seven. I know maybe it's twice.
How many days is it?
We just need to look.
I'll verify it. I just want to make sure that we're consistent across both debt exclusions and general election stuff, but I believe it's 14.
It's got to be 14, seven isn't much notice.
Right.
It might be two. I know usually we did it in two papers, but just as another thing while Jay is here, I filed a public disclosure form and I always get, I would just want to say, because there could be an appearance of a conflict where the company I work for could potentially bid a project like this. It has no financial bearing on me whatsoever. I have nothing to do with the bids. I have nothing to do with the results of the bids, but I think for just public disclosure, and I know I've, like I said, I have filed previously, that I just would like to say if anybody on the board has a problem with that, that's fine. Again, it's procurement law. Nobody has any advantage, but it could appear that way.
Okay.
Jay, you have any comment on that?
I don't.
Okay.
And you followed the rules and the proper disclosure, so.
Could it possibly be 14 and seven based upon?
I don't, I don't believe it's twice.
No, I think it's 14.
Yeah, I think it's 14.
I think that's a typo.
We'll make the, we'll amend it as appropriate to the law and then get.
I think there's probably a template that for some other thing had seven and, you know, the seven didn't get deleted. Happens all the time. All right, so we're going to hold on this and go to the other item that we have Jay captive for.
That's the warrant. Jay's been working with us on the language on the articles that appear in here.
Yeah.
The only one that was kind of late in developing was the last article related to the DIF presentation, district increment financing or improvement financing from last week. But that, there is really what I'd call, Jay, assist me here, but we wanted to keep that as generic, but still met the standard of the legislative requirement to get the DIF language on to the town meeting warrant, but not have so much detail it would completely confuse everyone. I do plan on having, speaking with Dan Horgan, to have a map, visual, so that people can see this before it goes up. And then we talk about what the DIF would do and what it means, and they'll see a visual rendition of it, and it'll be explained by town staff. And we also came up with the calculations. Thank you to all the departments that generated that for the free cash request associated with the tornado recovery.
I had someone ask me if there were provisions of the DIF with regard to state and federal taxation that we were not aware of.
I don't, this is all, this is just simply identifying a location for a future plan that would be put forward at a future town meeting to describe how the infrastructure would be financed in this plan. I'm not aware of any impact on federal or state taxation.
What gets a little confusing perhaps is one doesn't have necessarily to do with the other with regard to a DIF versus the opportunity zone. But this DIF falls within the opportunity zone where there are tax advantages, capital gains advantages for increases in value, but that theoretically has nothing to do with the DIF. It's the fact that it's in an opportunity zone.
Okay. So the DIF in itself does not convey any special advantages?
No.
Okay.
Can I just ask about, are we going through article by article?
If you want, sure.
Well, on Article Two, it says or any other sum.
That's a language that we've had from other articles of similar situations. So, you know, part of, on this question, we don't know what number you wanted to put in there, so we would put that in, but that, or any other sum is carried over from other standard articles like this.
What does that authorize, Jay, or any other sum?
Anything.
Well, I don't, I don't have actually a copy of the warrant.
Sorry, here. I've got an extra one. Holding out on you. You can't read our mind?
Article, Article Two, Jay.
So normally, what we would do for this in the article stage is just not even put in a dollar amount at all. So this is a way of preserving kind of the scope of the article question. So you'll see a lot of warrant articles at the annual town meeting or a special town meeting and just see if the town will appropriate a sum of funds to defray the costs and expenses or to pay for a capital item, whatever it is, without putting it in. And all that matters is that we put it in the motion. If you, there's a rule of thumb that is, that if you do put a dollar amount in an article, that does more or less frame the scope of the article for the moderator. So if someone, if you put in here $18 million and someone said, I move to reduce that by $4 million, fine, it's a lesser amount that would always be within the scope. If someone said, well, I think that we should have more, you know, more accoutrements in that DPW building, I'm sure Jeff would like that, and I want to, I move to increase that by 2 million to 20 million. Some might say that the voters did not have sufficient notice of that additional amount and therefore if they knew it was 20 million, they would have come out and voted no or yes, as the case may be. So while you can increase it, it can't be so much that someone couldn't have reasonably contemplated that amount. So I think the use of or any other sum is a way to have a little bit more leeway in that, to give the voters some notice that this number is the best we got so far. And it's important for us to give you that transparency by letting you know what we have in mind, but it may vary a little bit by the time we get to town meeting.
So will our warrant be printed prior to town meeting?
Yeah.
Well, then that solves a big problem because if they were allowed to go over that amount, our ballot question would no longer be valid or for that amount that was approved.
For that dollar, so that's part of the equation as to.
So why wouldn't you do up to like we had done in the past and remove the or any other sum?
Well, there might be a, and I hate to jinx it, but there might be a situation where the bid openings are October 16th. So we're going to know what the cost of the building is after production of the warrant.
But Mr. Chair, if I may, to that point, we'll have a more accurate number that could be replaced in the motion from town meeting floor. That was the intent of pursuing it in this, with this process, so that we'll, this is more or less a placeholder at this point. We could have a better number, we will have a better number for town meeting.
Okay, so that's why we put any other sum in case the bids come in over that amount?
Or in case there's an amendment up or down, right?
Okay.
Well, right, again, an amendment down wouldn't affect the scope of it, an amendment up, I think, do think you're giving the moderator a little bit more leeway to accept motions if for some reason the bids all came in at 19 and change.
But to be clear, once we walk out of town meeting, that number's locked. That's it.
Yes.
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, that's what you're, it could come in under budget and you could rescind some borrowing authority later for it, I suppose, but yes, that is.
That makes the ballot that much more difficult.
So it does. So, you know, so I would ask if we left the dollar value off of the ballot question proper and just put in language as an explanation as it's anticipated that the building could cost a sum of money like $18 million and $79,000, so would that maybe be a safeguard in case we had it over?
It certainly is a safer thing. It always depends on timing. If you know the amount and you know it's only going to be so much, then that's fine. Otherwise, sometimes the ballot isn't set, given timing of things until long enough.
And it won't be, yeah, we won't have enough time.
If you come in $1 over that, it's off. That's the problem with that.
They have to, they, yeah. The ballot is far more fixed than the.
Yes. So if the bids come in at, if we print or approve 18079 at town meeting and we put, that's it?
But if you left the amount out and then parenthetically say it is estimated that the cost would be approximately and give that number, you'd be okay, wouldn't you?
In the ballot question?
Yeah.
No, you can't, I wouldn't.
You don't make the amount part of the ballot question.
Explanation.
You leave the exact amount out, but you can state what you think the anticipated.
There is a certain amount of leeway that Phil has to put some explanations in the election notice as to what people are voting for. We can, we can, we can look at that a little bit, so.
I think one of the options that I believe you'll be discussing shortly is that we're telling the taxpayers what we'll borrow up to. What you have and the taxpayers have the ability to do is to use other supplemental sources if we find that we need to go above what has been authorized for borrowing to actually supplement to get a project done that they want to get done.
Yeah, I mean, the voters could, presented with an article at town meeting in May, authorize another X amount of dollars out of free cash or stabilization fund or capital appropriations fund, some other source.
Well, we do have that, we have that article on this special town meeting that you could do on, from the floor. We, I've queued it up to consider capital stabilization, free cash, or even chapter 90 borrowing.
But how do you sign a contract when the money hasn't been appropriated?
Well, so interestingly, this, we're all talking about a hypothetical number right now, but by October 16th, we'll have the bid open, we'll go to town meeting with what the dollar value is. And I'll just play this out, but say it came in at 18 and a half, 18 million 500,000, then we would know going into town meeting, we could use some supplemental funds to bring the number back down if we decided to keep the ballot question at up to 18 or 18,000, 18 million 79,000. So we do have that option. We'll walk into town meeting with the estimate in hand.
But not the supplemental appropriate.
No, we do. There is an article that would allow you to make a motion on town meeting floor to access free cash, capital stabilization.
Okay.
And chapter 90 is an administrative function.
Down.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, though.
I mean, or you could do it under this article, too, if provided it didn't exceed the scope. And we would just have to be careful that the amount that we're doing as the contingency for Prop 2 and 1/2 would only be the amount that's on the ballot.
Well, I'm just, I think we need to be clear to the voters what this building's going to cost, whether they, you know, whether they raise or appropriate or fund from free cash if it ends up being 25 million and we're saying it's only going to be 18, I think that that's problematic for people.
That's problematic for us.
Yes. I agree, but, you know, they don't, they don't want to hear after the fact when they only voted a certain number or whatever, so I think we have to be as clear as possible.
So Jay, going back to the special town election, the special town election, do you recommend we leave that number out?
Well, again, because I'm generally confined to taking the most, giving the most conservative advice, you know, from a legal perspective, and if you want the least number of variables possible, I would leave the amount out. If you're concerned that the voters might look at it with blank stares or some portion of them and would benefit from having the amount in, then you put the amount in, and if it happens to be more than that, then, then we'll have to, if the cost of it, then we'd have to account for that at town meeting with a supplemental funding source. So there's ways at it. It's a little, few more variables. So the simplest and cleanest way is to not have the dollar amount in the ballot question.
Now, we are allowed to give out a flyer.
You absolutely are.
So I think that that's something that we've done in the past. We used to have this problem all the time because we used to have to print, there was never enough time before, between the town meeting and the warrant, which is why we changed town meeting so we don't have this problem. We can print the ballot after town meeting has been decided. But there have been times where the numbers have went down and we've given out flyers. So I think if we leave the number out and then we have information provided with what town meeting's action was and what the actual dollar amount was and how, you know, break it down for people.
At the polling stations.
Yes.
Having available at the polling stations.
Does anybody know what's a reasonable variance from that number that's in the article? I mean, do we?
Well, we gave you a low value number based on the lowest value from the independent cost estimator and the high value from the other independent cost estimator, and it's a range of 2 million and change, I think, so.
One and a half.
One and a half?
So there's a one and a half million dollar variance.
It's a big variance.
I do, I think if we went, just to wrap that election ballot question up, if we went with no dollar value associated with it to select one post point, I think we could generate an explanation that would occur to town meeting floor. So anybody that's going in with a ballot, they'll get a statement that says this is what the vote's all about, you know?
That's the only way to do it.
Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense. The only problem I have is I don't know how many people are not going to be at town meeting that are going to be voting.
A lot. Usually it's, usually we have, we might have 300 people at town meeting and we'll probably have 3,000 voting, two to three, maybe two, but still, there's.
But we certainly can put, I think you could, I don't see why there would be a problem, an explanation in the polling booths. So as they fill out the ballot, they would be able to see the explanation.
I think we'd have to have that.
Yeah.
We'll look into that, see what fills them, yeah.
So can, can we agree to leave the amount out but provide an explanation as to the cost on the ballot?
I think we have to.
Can we do it that way?
I, you know, I guess I'm, I'm very uncomfortable not having the dollar amount in there. I just, I just think that we advertise something in the paper, we get the dollar amount in front of people, we ought to have that. And, you know, it just, I'm bothered not telling people exactly what they're voting for.
I mean, that's the preferred way, obviously, but we have some. Yeah, I mean, that's the preferred way, obviously, but we, we have some logistical problems in terms of the bids, the opening of the bids, the, the timing of the, of the election and the town meeting and so forth. And, and having to potentially make up the difference with other funding sources, it gets a bit complicated. Tracy, what would you say? How, how do you want to resolve this, one way or the other? Do we put the number in or do we leave it out with an explanation? I think those are the two choices. Norm says he'd like to leave it in. What do you say, Mark?
Right.
I'm comfortable with leaving it out.
Okay.
And then providing an explanation. It's not, Jeff, what is? We were just discussing another complication and that is what has led to some of this previously when, when Phil Godet was here, is the absentee ballot issue. And those get printed two weeks ahead of time and the question, I think, needs to be the same as what's on the ballot question at the polls, so that's a challenge.
So, so you could do it with a handout at the polls or?
But you wouldn't have it for the absentee folks?
Well, they're going to get a ballot with no number.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think going back to the very beginning of this conversation, we did talk about on the ballot itself, a small statement as to the anticipated cost.
Well, I think what they're suggesting, though, however, is that we may not know that cost because town meeting would not have happened yet by the time they have to print the absentee ballots. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
That's correct. I mean, it's pretty close to that. Two weeks, I think the board was appreciative of the absentee ballot issue when, when Phil was here presenting that. And I think we could do that explanation with the absentee ballots, but again, it would be a very short turnaround. The bid opening is the 16th of October. Absentee ballots, we wouldn't be able to have available till that number was known if that explanation needed to be included with the absentee ballots.
So you're, do we have enough time, Dan, given the schedule? If we wanted to have with the absentee ballot some discussion of, or some explanation?
We can't, we would just have to delay the absentee ballots till that was available.
Right.
Absolutely. And it would be about two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, we're always in the same timeframe because we were anticipating the absentee ballots to be back on, I think it's the 21st of October.
Right.
Right? So bid openings are the 16th of October. We would know that.
Right.
And we, and there's not going to be a tremendous rush on absentee ballots, I would not imagine that we couldn't handle.
Yeah.
Talking with Phil today, his preference was October 8th to have the ballots done and to the printer. And selectmen post, just to your point about the duration, a lot of that's driven by the amount of time the bid is good for from the RFP or the bid process. It's only good for 30 days, so we couldn't have more space between when the bid opening was and when we had the election, so that was.
If we don't get the ballot right, we could, that could be all for nothing.
Right.
So we don't want to waste that exercise either, so.
And that's why, you know.
Could you do a different handout with an absentee ballot that would be more general? That says, here's our projections, it's all going to be based on town meeting. At least they'll have a sense of it could be 18 million.
Can you do that? Can you have a different explanation, Jay, with an absentee ballot than you have at a regular ballot?
Well, I think it might be we're talking about a potential insert, not something printed on it. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. It's something that I could work with Phil on and, and provide some more guidance on that. I don't know, honestly, if they can get information that's different in some way, shape or form than what we would otherwise provide. There's a couple of issues, you know, we'll have to examine exactly the lengths that we can go to. We're not advocating for anything more or less, but providing more information to one type of voter than to the other might be somewhat difficult. I'd like to think we can, but I want to be careful. So I want to talk to Phil.
And this is part of, I think, the overall discussion that we all had, which was, if we had an up to number for the debt and we got surprised pleasantly on the downside for the bid, we'd be in great shape. If it went above the 18 million and we committed to the fact that that's all we're going to borrow and then at town meeting, if we needed more money than, and this, and you folks and the voters were willing to go above that high side estimate that we currently have, then you would have the flexibility to do that, but the ballot would limit the total amount that you could borrow.
Do we have a million and a half dollars that we can get from other sources if we go over by that projected percent?
Well, we've already put the borrowing estimate at.
The high end.
The high end of that 1 million and a half dollars.
But let, I want to just reiterate, the ballot has nothing to do with how much you can borrow. The ballot has, has only to do with how much you're excluding from debt.
Right. Right.
So you can choose to exclude in, through the warrant article, for example, the motion could be, and, you know, provided that this appropriation is contingent upon excluding from debt the sum of 10 million, let's say you choose to use several other sources and then, but only exclude from debt a certain portion of it. That can be done. So the ballot question is just excluding a, whatever the warrant article says you're going to exclude from the levy limit. It, it says, no, it's not authorizing borrowing at all. That comes out of the warrant article.
And within the warrant article, you have, you can choose to borrow or you could choose to use existing funds that might be available, as Dan indicated, chapter 90, capital stabilization and free cash.
And that's what articles seven and eight are, Dan?
Uh, it's, let's see which article it's at.
I think you have two different, yeah, seven.
Yeah, it's article seven, yeah. Right. In chapter 90, Jeff had indicated to me is expenditures are to discretion of the town administrator. So if the board authorized.
Isn't chapter 90, chapter 90 is the road, right?
It's road money, but it, but a portion of that is used to pay for equipment in the, in the housing of the equipment, in the building itself. So you can borrow against an appropriation. So essentially, just hypothetically, you wanted to use $500,000 of chapter 90 money from the 2020 allocation, we would present that to the state and they would allow us potentially to use $500,000. You just, that would mean, that would be, that less that would be used on road repair and road related activities.
Exactly, that puts us back, and we've already had an override for road repair, which we earmark specifically.
Oh, I'm just saying, it's an option, that's, you know, it's another, trying to estimate the worst possible scenario here, so.
Good.
The, the 1.2 million of road, that's, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the supplemental.
Yeah, but the 1.2 million is over the chapter 90.
Yes.
I mean, it's semantics. You're taking it from the thing that we needed it for.
Right, okay.
Okay.
It's not, not taking it from the 1.2.
I understand that, but it's, again, it's semantics. It's the same pot of money.
So the, with the inclusion of article, was it seven?
Seven.
That makes up for the supplemental funding.
Yeah.
Is, is that enough to warrant that we leave the sum in article two? Because you said that's the higher end that you anticipate already, the 18079, right?
Yeah.
Plus, you got the buffer with article seven to make up anything over and be, over, over and above that.
Provided that we avoid a situation where two passes but seven fails and we don't have enough money.
Or somebody reduces to.
Yeah, but you could still take up that at the annual, right?
No.
Well, you, I mean, you could, depending upon the contract that you're signing. I mean, there's a number of variables here, but we could also, we have some leeway in article two to consider other sources as well. It says appropriate borrower and or transfer from available funds. If that number is variable, some of it could be by borrowing. Appropriate by borrowings, X appropriate from the capital stabilization, Y. You know, so we could do it all there and skip over seven altogether if we wanted to get the vote cleared up right then and there.
I think there has to come a time too, at a certain dollar amount, that we need to decide as a community, regardless of where we take it from, what the value of the building is. I mean, obviously, that's for the people to decide, but, you know, when we started this process, we were looking at 13 million. Now we're talking 18 already and that's a lot of money for a building. I'm not saying it's not needed, but at what point in time do we have a fail safe to say if it ends up being 22 million, then what? Is that?
That's a problem.
I'm just, I know, but I'm just saying at some point in time.
I haven't really thought that dramatically yet on this topic, but.
Again, we'll know on October 16th.
But whether you leave the dollar amount in article two or not, Mike, I think it says, or any other sum, so it's, it's irrelevant. You can insert any number there.
You can. I was thinking more of the ballot, not, not the article. I'm just thinking if, if we have article seven, can we leave that 18?
On the ballot question.
079 mil on the ballot.
Yeah, so if we had an, if we had a bid that came in over that number at town meeting, you could work it back with supplemental funds.
It might not be a dramatic number.
No, it might not.
It might be a few hundred thousand, something like that where you can.
The problem is it could come in at 13 or 15, and then we have a number printed on there that could scare people that, you know what I mean?
And, Mike, to your point, again, the ballot question is not authorizing anything. So let, let's say for some reason we open up bids and it ends up being 14 million dollars, and that's what the town meeting article says, but you've got a ballot question that is allowing you to exclude debt up to 18 million. Well, if you're not borrowing it, you're not, you have some capacity over and above for that project if you had to, if there was some supplemental borrowing or whatever, but it just means that for that specific project, you have the authority to exclude from debt the 18 million 79,475.
But because town meeting is only approved.
Town meeting is only approved.
Yeah, that, that really doesn't.
That's right.
Go anywhere.
But there's a.
The only concern you would have is if town meeting made the, the entire amount, it ends up at 19 million contingent on an override and you only have 18 million in the, in the ballot, but that's why we have the leeway under both article two and article seven to identify some supplemental funding sources to make sure that we don't exceed the 18 million 79.
But isn't, I mean, the borrowing or the authorization for the debt exclusion, can't that be reconsidered in terms of amount or amended at a, a later town meeting? So in May, if, if, let's say that, you know, it came in higher, we, couldn't we amend that at the May town meeting?
Yeah, to a certain degree that certain monies aren't yet encumbered by a contractor otherwise, then certainly.
I think the problem, though, would be the bids are invalid after 30 days. The contractor doesn't hold the price.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, is there a scenario where, where a later town meeting could affect this town meeting vote?
What if, you know, the, the taxpayers say, no, we don't authorize any borrowing. We don't authorize any, any override. So then we'd be stuck with finding the money.
No, you wouldn't because the entire appropriation is contingent. You'd have no project.
No project.
Because the, the motion under the article.
It's really just a supplemental motion.
Yeah, and both, both the article and the motion are going to say that this entire project is contingent on a getting the override too. So it has to prevail in both for the, for the town, for the taxpayers to be subject to it.
Right.
Because otherwise, if it wasn't contingent, then that'd be 18 million you'd have to cut from something else.
Mm-hmm. But I'm still, still, you know, let's, again, if the voters voted for an amount today or on November 5th is smaller than the requirement of the bids, the bids come in with 19 million, and the voters have voted on a smaller amount, whatever that amount is, they could still go back, or we could still suggest going back as opposed to using free cash or stabilization, still go back and ask for an amended vote.
You'd have to ask for an amended contract because you can't sign a contract for money you don't have.
Yeah, you probably have to put it out to.
You can't sign an 18 million dollar contract for the funds you don't have.
Have to put it out to bid again.
Yeah, I mean, there's a million variables that are kind of beyond what, what we could imagine here if we sat here all night.
And we could sit here all night.
We could. So I think, now that, if I could kind of summarize it and we've kind of talked ourselves around a little bit, is that.
That would be helpful.
I think we're, I think we're okay putting this amount if we feel that that's a good approximation in, in the ballot question. If we're, if we're confident that if for some reason it exceeded it, then we could use another source of funds.
I mean, that is the high amount.
If we feel that, that there's value to the voters of having the ballot question list an amount, let's go with it and let's commit ourselves to working towards other funding sources in addition to the borrowing at that time. If you are concerned that that is too confusing at town meeting, then let's not put the amount in, but.
I think from a legal point of view, it makes sense to leave it out, but I think from a political point of view.
Right.
It makes more sense to leave it in because I am concerned that if people see no amount, they're going to look at it as a carte blanche appropriation, that could mean the sun, the moon and the stars, and they're just going to vote no.
No, I would agree. I would agree.
But again, I think that it, it's problematic because, just because they're voting for this 18 million potentially doesn't mean that that's the cost. We could be, we could have already taken 2 million from free cash and other places, so I think that that's really not the cost of the building anyway.
That's the price of not coming to town meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Should the authorization read up to an amount as opposed to a specific number? Jay, can you write it that way?
The authorization in the ballot question or in the warrant article?
I'm talking about the ballot question.
I don't think so.
No, okay.
You have to exclude a certain, if you're going to describe it, you should describe it precisely.
Yeah, and then if you don't need that capacity, you can borrow less.
There's no harm in it, it's just for, so there, there's two elements to the debt exclusion question. The first is it is authorizing you to exclude debt.
Right.
And that's a key component. The second is that it's describing it with respect to a specific project. So let's say the project came in at 12 million, but then there was another pet project for a new annex for Dan's office over here in, in town hall for another 6 million. That ballot question wouldn't be sufficient for that because it wasn't described that way in the ballot. So you can't just freelance with this extra 6 million in capacity. Doesn't work like that.
But if the plans change for an add-on for another million, you could, right?
The way the ballot is structured now?
If you were under.
If you were under at town meeting?
And, and, yeah, let's say you voted, the town meeting voted a higher appropriation, and then there was a change in the, in the development plans to go, go a little more high end on some things. You could, you could borrow that money because it's project related, correct? I'm not saying you should do that, but you could, couldn't you?
I don't think, as long as it's, if it's inconsistent with the town meeting vote.
Well, the, the town meeting vote's.
Oh, it's still under, it's still under. What I'm saying is if you spend the excess.
I see.
On that project, you could do that, right?
The ballot language that we work with bond counsel on does say up to, so.
It does, because I've seen that before.
Yeah. That may, or may not be comfortable with, with Jay, but that, that's currently how, how we have it.
Okay, so if we leave.
And I think, I, I'm going to pull up the D Y as well, and I think that may have been up to as well, so.
Which D Y question? Our D Y question or theirs?
Uh, theirs.
Theirs was not a debt exclusion question.
Right.
Theirs was just a straight appropriation question.
Right, it was.
So that, that's not going to bear on it.
Okay, all right.
So, but if, if Rick Manley's comfortable with an up to thing that, that seems to be somewhat inconsistent with what DOR references for these things, but DOR isn't going to review something on a, on a debt exclusion like that. something on a debt exclusion like that, it's really for bond council purposes, if he's comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable with it.
He's looked at it twice.
Yeah. Again, it's just a description, unlike an operating override, which, where you're required to put in the amount.
I just get nervous, because if the bids come in at 15, and we have 18, and the ballot fails, are we going to sit here and say, geez, I wonder if it would have been different if we had the right number on there, because?
But we have no way of knowing, but we have no way of anticipating that with the timeframes we have.
Yeah.
Tracy, you made a good point earlier, though, then we can.
All my points are good, Ed.
We can give them the handout.
Fine.
Yeah, we can post, by the time actual election day occurs, we'll have the bids in hand, the bid in hand, and we'll know.
So you think we should print with the number and still do a handout?
No, I'm, to your point, so if it's close to the $18 million, we don't have to do anything. If it's lower, to your point, so that we don't scare people away, we can give them the handout.
Okay. As long as people understand, what, the other piece is, even if it's lower, if it's higher, and we're using money from other places, then somehow, I think that that needs to also get out to the public, that they know what the total project cost is.
But Article 7 is just going to be handled internally at town meeting, right?
Town meeting.
It's not going to do with the ballot. No, but that's what I'm saying, we could have 20 million.
I think the hope is that we pass over Article 7 without.
Having to use it.
Having to use it.
Yeah.
Again.
Or if we do that, it's not a big number.
That's right. Well, we could handle potential supplemental, we'll know, we can, by the time we're crafting motions for a town meeting, we'll know.
Okay. So, is it the wish of the board, then, that we leave the amount in on the ballot? I think that's what I'm hearing, right?
That's what you're hearing.
Mark, I'm in favor of that. Mark's in favor, Norm?
Yes.
Tracy?
That's fine, as long as if it's much lower or much higher, we're using supplemental sources, we have some way of.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got some explanations to put in order, certainly.
But with the caveat, if I made to select one for his point, because I don't see, Ed, on the version that I have in the packet, language.
It's not "up to."
It's not "up to," correct, right.
It's precise.
It's precise, right. So what made the packet was precise language. Okay, that wasn't the ballot draft, then. Okay. That was the elect, or, okay. Yeah, let me, let me change that one, too. If you can just double-check while we're at the meeting? Let me change that, too, and I'll forward the email from Rick Manley and Lynn Welsh again.
What do we need to vote on this?
Can we?
We want to.
Because we want to fix two typos? Yeah, we want to fix the typos. I'll put in "up to." And "up to."
As long as that was Rick's.
And Jay, I'll send you, I'll just send you the email from Lynn Welsh and Rick Manley.
So do you want to, do you think we need a formal vote on that?
Well, we will, but can you, can we move to the warrant?
The questions.
Articles, yeah, before we do that, I think we have everything ready to go, but.
Anyone have anything else that they want to ask Jay about on the warrant?
Two, I would bring to your attention, Kathy Williams had indicated to me, planning board has not yet had a hearing on the two zoning pieces, so that will occur, I want to say, October, October 16th. So you'll have a, by the next recommendation from planning board on that, that's correct.
All right, so where are we, then, on the warrant articles?
So that was, we covered one, which is the agreement, the D Y agreement language, that's the same over in Dennis, it's what we voted on back in August.
So Article 2.
Make a motion to place and recommend Article 1.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none of those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So it passes 4-0. Article 2. We have a motion on Article 2?
I move that we place and recommend Article 2 as presented to us.
We have a second?
I'd ask that we place and hold, hold the recommendation till.
I'll second it, for purposes of discussion. Why would we place and hold it?
Well, I didn't know if Eric wanted to participate in his recommendation, but.
I need to have authorization tonight, because our scheduled calls for going to the printer and getting published on the 27th, three days.
So we don't have time to reconsider this?
Well, we can recommend at any time.
Yes, really, I was planning on bringing that up at the last meeting, before town meeting, the actual recommendations, that provision.
That's what you're looking for, right, Tracy?
Yeah, so right now, we have it written such that it'd be recommended from the floor. It'll be printed that way, just because we have to go to print earlier, but the reality is, we can take a vote on each article just before town meeting, and then have it available that morning.
I only said the recommendation on one, because we already took a vote on that.
Right. All right, so, what was your motion again, Tracy?
Norm made the motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, Norm, I'm sorry.
That we place and recommend.
Okay. Are we going to, I mean, we debated this thing at length, I think we've, I thought we came to a conclusion on this. I'll second it. Does anyone else want to be heard on this before we vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so that passes. Article 3.
I have a question on 3, and I'm just looking at it very quickly, Jay, but what we're trying to do is, we have a, kind of a rare point in time where we have surplus members over seven on our finance committee, which, it's generally very difficult to get seven, but we don't want to lose talent, so we might want to add, you know, one or two members. But I have a question on quorum. I believe we were talking about four being, constituting a quorum, in other words, looking at those extra positions as kind of a bonus, if you will. We're really still dealing primarily with a seven-member board, no less than seven members at any one time. So, we don't have anything in here as to what would constitute a quorum. I think it might be good to say that four members will be a quorum, because you may, you may get this board quickly to shrink down to seven. We have, we have some elderly members on the board that may be moving on, and we'll be back to seven.
I'd suggest you leave it alone, because state law says a quorum is a majority of those than in office, so if it's nine, it's five, if it's seven, it's four, if it's eight, it's, a quorum is five, so.
So eight would be a quorum of five.
Yeah, it's a majority, got to be a majority.
I, you know, Mike, I gave that a lot of thought, and what I thought about mostly was the idea that, because our bylaws were silent on that whole concept, that it may be best to just be handled by the chairman that sits based on the membership that's presently, such that, like, say we have seven, going into that year, you need to have sitting four members to take a business action.
Yeah, because I do expect some fluctuation.
Oh, I don't disagree with you, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. You answered my question, Jay.
The chairman can make that designation?
Well, it's part of the rules of operating the committee, right? So, you know, if you, if you have to have a majority, well, it's up to the committee to come up with a particular set of operating principles.
Hmm.
All right, so, anyone want to make a motion on Article 3? What Article 3 basically is doing is increasing the number to no more than nine from the seven-member committee, but the committee will be fully constituted at seven, that's the minimum number.
All right, I think, you know, at this, at this point, if they say they want to have nine, they have to understand that that means that their quorum goes up.
That's right.
And they have to be able to make that at every meeting, because otherwise, their meetings have to dissolve, and I think it could be disastrous in the middle of winter, when the finance committee is really heavily involved in reviewing the budget, to all of a sudden have a couple of meetings canceled, so they've got to be very cognizant of that.
Yeah, let me run this by Jay. So, could you phrase it such that a quorum is the majority of the members that appeared at that meeting as opposed to the general membership number? So say you had nine members, seven show up, your quorum, I mean, at that point, you'd have, you'd have more than five.
Your quorum should be no less than four.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the point I was.
Problem is, is that, so, there is, there's voting, and then there's quorum, so, for instance, there is a, conservation commissions are treated a little bit differently than some of the other land use boards. There's a weird little regulation for them under state law. I think the regulation is actually a mistake, but it functions okay. So state law states, the open meeting law states, that a quorum is a majority of the members in office, not the majority necessarily as the board is constituted, because that's, is a different animal, that does apply to certain boards. Conservation commissions can take a vote, if they're a seven-member board, if there's only, they can take, if their membership dwindles to four, they can still have meetings, and the quorums are, the quorum is those then in office, but they could literally pass a vote with two or three people, depending on how things happen. I'm concerned about setting a quorum of four for a board that could be as many as nine, because I think that that conflicts with state law, if you have nine in office, if it, if it drops a number to seven.
Could you have a quorum of four, up to eight, and a quorum of five, if you had a full board of nine? Because right now, that's going to be the situation.
Quorum is defined under Chapter 30A, I think Section 18, as a majority of those than in office, I can call up the specific statute, and I'm wary of developing a bylaw that conflicts with a state law dictate.
Okay.
So, just check, though.
Well, the, Dan, you're a regular member of the finance committee, right?
Well, I'm not, I don't think I'm considered, I'm like a.
Not a voting member?
Yeah, not a voting member, no, just, I can just appear.
Okay.
Like you do here.
And disappear.
Well, maybe so. I could participate, how about that?
All right, all right.
I don't, I don't know as, I don't know as we've ever allowed a chairman to set that. I would be afraid, and I'm not saying that anything about our finance committee now, currently, or whatever, but I'm just saying in general, if there were people who, they didn't want their vote to count, that they would make up the rules as they went along to make sure that they were excluded from that, and I think that that's problematic. So I think, I'm not sure if it's in the, in our committee charge, or right in our charter, but I'm pretty sure the quorums are set.
It wasn't in the charter, I believe I thoroughly looked at. The charge, though, I did not look at, because it was set in charter.
Finance committee isn't governed by state, it's not, not by the state, right? There's nothing that needs, there's no vote of the finance committee that needs a supermajority, correct?
Not a supermajority.
Okay, or a, like ours, we have some things that are four-fifths votes, so that, but I do not believe it should be left yearly.
Are there any, is there any way that we can leave the number at seven, but have alternates?
You absolutely can do that, there's no question about that.
Okay, so we could have alternates, you know, as many as we want, and then.
They could vote if there wasn't.
Correct.
And I'm sure the chair would recognize them and allow those people to participate in the meetings if they so choose. You know, I think that that probably would be a better way to approach this, so that, and then that allows the flexibility going into the future. So if we provided no less than, what's the proper wording, consisting of no less than seven?
We have seven, no.
I know, I know, but I'm trying to get the wording for the alternates.
You have to say up to two alternate members, right?
You may want to then define what those alternate members can do, so sometimes, like, for example, the planning board has alternate members, and they can step in and vote if there's an absence on zoning matters. But a zoning board cannot, I mean, or like a conservation commission does not have alternate members that can step up and vote. And those alternate members for a planning board can't step up and vote on subdivisions, but only on zoning matters, so you could define, they can either be along for the ride, and it's kind of a training ground, and they can participate but not vote, or you could say, and such alternates shall, in the event of an absence of a, of one of the seven members, may be authorized to act, or something like that, I mean, you could do that, potentially.
Is there any reason we have to do something on this? I mean, the.
You know, we could, I suppose we could leave this language as is right now, we could actually make some sort of amendment, or maybe we have further definition of quorum for you, as the meeting rolls through October. We can have a further research, and then we can just change this, or amend it on the floor at town meeting. I think the intent is to provide an opportunity to get more members, a more, I mean, because I, even since I've been here, there's been sometimes, a number of meetings have been postponed because we didn't quite get there, and, you know, and so going through this, the quorum issue did pop up, and I looked at it a little bit with the time that we had, but I think it needs more vetting, and my own concern with alternate members is sometimes, like, you know, I know in the planning board piece, they have to be in attendance to actually take that future zoning vote, you know, so how do you, on a very informal board, with part-time meeting notes being taken, how do you ensure that? And I think the intent was to make nine, up to nine, full authorized members, I think that was what the intent of doing this was, and I think.
That was.
Yeah, we should probably work on what that quorum issue looks like, and then we can get some further guidance. That'd be my recommendation, is to keep it as it is, and if we need to make a change at town meeting floor, we could do that.
I just looked at the state statute, it seems to refer to quorum as being a majority, doesn't seem to, it does, and then it says, unless authorized, authorized by special legislation general laws, or other authorizing provision, I don't know what they mean by other authorizing provision, if that could include a local bylaw that sets a very low quorum. I haven't seen that before, or if they mean only a state provision. I just checked the open meeting law guide, published by the state, and I didn't see any reference to what that other authorizing position could be, but it's something we could look at. I have my doubts that it could be a local bylaw, where you could set a quorum at two, for example, but I'm happy to look at the question. And I think generally, those quorums, when they say unless, it generally means that they're going up, not down. I'll take a look at the question.
I'm comfortable with leaving it this way, I don't think it references quorum, and I think that's fine, because I think it's set by the rules.
By the number.
The majority, yeah.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second to recommend Article 2, is that the motion?
Three.
I'm sorry, three, is that your motion?
To put it on the warrant.
Would that to recommend it?
Yes, to place and recommend.
She wants to place and recommend. Do you second that?
It's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 4-0.
I move to place Article 4, 5, 4 and 5, and not make a recommendation till after the planning board has its meeting.
Second.
Okay, to place, but not to reserve recommendation until after the planning board has its meeting on 4 and 5, Tracy, right?
Correct.
Okay, just further discussion on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 4-0. Bring this to 6.
So on Article 6, this is the amount in wages and what I would call verifiable expenditures on expenses to date, not, not future projections of replacement of trees down the line and whatnot, but it was, because remember, regular wages wouldn't be reimbursable, because it's part of their normal workday allocation, so this would be overtime wages. The other piece that's in there, I've asterisk, I put asterisks there, on the golf situation. The other piece that's in there, I've asterisk, I put asterisks there, on the golf situation, we have submitted that as a insurance claim, as a business operating that took a loss. We don't have verification yet that, that would be reimbursed. I would hope, though, by town meeting, that we might get guidance from the insurance company on that, and then that, and in that case, those items could come off.
So, this is all storm-related?
This is all storm-related, that's correct.
Okay. I'm not sure that it, it'll have to be in the presentation. It doesn't come across in the article itself.
Yeah, the article...
Three hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Yeah, for the following purposes.
Yeah, it was, the, from storm-related cleanup was, got deleted off, that was in the original.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it doesn't, otherwise, you know, the way I first read this is we were just authorizing overtime.
No, I'll, I'll make that amendment to it, that it should have been from storm-related cleanup.
Why are some of these very specific and some of these just general?
Uh...
Are they real?
Yeah, well, that's, we've gone through this exercise time and time again, and I've asked those departments where we have like a round number to be prepared to explain why it's a round number as opposed to a two-descent number.
The tub grinder, it looks like a round number, fifty thousand. Don't get me wrong, I saw those guys in operation, they're a pretty impressive crew.
Yeah, that didn't take long to get that kind of number, five thousand almost a day, There is, we're working with the legislative delegation to get reimbursement at the state level. As you know, the federal government did not, we did not reach those thresholds, but there's an anticipation that there'll be a state supplemental in the future, so hopefully we'd get fully reimbursed for these costs.
What does that leave our free cash balance at?
I think we're at three point four million minus this, so it'd be right around three million dollars.
What is, in the first line of DPW, in parentheses, it says brush and tree disposal and grinding and disposal, is that wages?
That's probably the cost of taking in all the brush.
Which one is that, Norm?
The very first DPW item.
Right.
Okay, I see, eighty-seven, five-five-five, that one.
Right.
If I may, those were the actual costs associated with grinding and disposing of the brush and stump material that came to the disposal area.
So, is that wages? So, is it wages of the people that were doing that?
No, that's the cost of having that outside contractor with that tub grinder available for grinding and then hauling away the material.
Okay.
Did you get the tub grind, oh, that's the equipment rental?
Mm-hmm.
Jeff, how, how is that either related or different from the item you just, you just described? It's the one that's down, one, two, three more lines down, tub grinder, equipment rental, fifty thousand.
Certainly. That is an item that has not been expended yet. That tub grinder rental is what we expect on the second go-round for grinding and disposal of wood chips.
Okay.
There's still a very sizable pile there, which we're continuing to water down, but sometime this fall, we will be bringing that tub grinder back to grind that up.
Okay.
That is storm-related material that's on-site that has not yet been ground, so that's what that number is.
Okay.
Okay, good. I think there was also a question on them, on availability, too, because you could only use them for so long, because you didn't know what your needs were going to be from that point going forward. And other towns, obviously, were waiting to enlist their services, so you had to kind of wait until they were, went through that cycle.
That, that's certainly a factor. The other piece is we want to make sure that we have, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the material on-site. We're still actively cleaning up. I know I haven't given you a report in a couple of weeks, but we're still actively pulling stumps, removing some trees that aren't, weren't in imminent danger of falling down, but were damaged by the storm. That's still ongoing, including some efforts today. We rented a lift in which to remove some of those trees ourselves in-house, really trying to do it as cost-effective as possible, but it will be a period of time, a number of weeks more of cleanup that's ongoing. Those costs are relatively minor, except for that tub grinder that's still to be brought to the site, but we want to make sure we have the bulk of the, like I said, ninety-nine point nine percent of material ready to be ground, so we don't have to go through this exercise again.
What was that, is that correct, Dan, about forty-five hundred a day for that?
That's right, that was the daily rate.
Yeah. But they move a lot of material in a day.
That's right. And we could, that's the other reason for having most material there, is they're going to do it in roughly two days. They're very quick about it. We don't want to prolong the time that they're there. We want it quickly done, as cheaply as possible, and get that material out of there.
I've seen them work. I was amazed at how fast they can move that stuff. It's really impressive.
It's an impressive piece of equipment, absolutely.
Okay, so...
We're going to make that amendment that's going to say tornado-related.
The language, it'll be tornado-related storm cleanup, yeah.
Damage.
Yeah.
Any motion on this? At Six.
I move that we recommend, place and recommend Article Six with the amended language for tornado-related.
Okay.
Related.
So, we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, to place and approve Article Six with the amendment that these expenses shown in this article are related to the tornado. So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Article Seven.
I'll make a motion, we place Article Seven.
Okay. So, we have a motion to place only Article Seven and reserve on recommendation. Right.
We have any numbers or anything?
Yeah, and, you know, I think we're going to have to decide on that at town meeting.
Correct.
Well, actually, I think if everything works right, we'll have one meeting before that, we can have a discussion after the bid estimates and...
But it won't make it into the warrant.
It won't, it will not.
Right, our recommendation would not make it into the warrant, yeah.
Okay, so, any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero.
We have no choice but to let...
That's my understanding.
...文章 Article Eighteen, and we will have a presentation.
There is a presentation coming, that's correct.
Okay, so, we place Article, we have a motion to place Article Eight in a warrant without a recommendation at this time. You have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So...
We're voting to what?
Place it.
Place it. On the warrant without any recommendation, because we haven't had a presentation yet on that article.
Okay.
So, it's just going to appear at this point. We don't know what we're going to do.
Okay.
So, I'm voting, Mark votes yes, I vote yes. Tracy, did you vote? Yes. Norm, did you vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that's four to zero on Eight. On Nine, that's the diff article.
Make a motion that we place Article Nine.
Okay, motion to place Article Nine.
I'll second that.
We'll second by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Anyone opposed?
Will this be part of, this isn't part of zoning, right? So, the planning board doesn't have a public hearing on this?
No.
Okay.
But we will put a, like, a small staff presentation at town meeting on this, with the maps, everybody's clear.
All right, so Nine will be placed, and that vote was four to zero. And that does it for the warrant. Sign election warrants.
So, if I, I'm not sure, I double-checked the, the communication, Mr. Chairman, on, from Rick Manley, I did not see up-to language.
Ed just sent an email, he recounted that it was in a discussion, but not in, in the email itself, so to be safe, let's put in the exact amount.
Exact amount, that's what I thought.
I'm going to credit and bring it right.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, what do we have on sign election warrant? We get, we have...
It's in the folder.
Yeah, it's in the science, in the folder.
Everybody signed that?
That's correct, yes. Yep, everybody needs to sign that. So, a motion to, once we get the language now, we'll just need a motion to approve the ballot as presented.
And with the number, so we're putting the number in.
Mark, you have to sign that.
The last question I have on there, apparently, the last special town meeting started at seven o'clock, and I was going to get your input as to, would you prefer to start that at six o'clock?
I would, I would, yeah, definitely.
I know, but people used to argue they didn't have time to go home and eat dinner after work.
I know, I got a lot of those.
So, that was, I mean, personally, for me personally, it's fine, but I'm not sure the public at large.
I think we want to get people there, and I think if you started after dinnertime, you're apt to get more people there. Like Tracy said, with me, I don't really care either way, but I think we should leave it at seven.
Okay. It's because it has to go to print, that's why I asked tonight, so.
It's not a long warrant, it shouldn't take a lot of time.
No, it shouldn't, I don't anticipate that.
It's going to be dark either way at that point.
It's going to be dark either way.
So, I mean, if it was the argument of people not having to drive in the dark, then it'd be in favor of moving it up, but I'm not sure it's going to make a difference.
Okay, we'll go back to seven then.
Yeah, I think, I think we should bring it up again, though, in the future, because I do think...
Well, we'll see how it goes, and then, you know, we can adjust.
Do theirs at six?
Huh? Yep.
They do, six?
Yeah, in fact, at our last town meeting, I made a huge plea, I was on TV, radio, whatever place I could go to that were, that would listen to me, to urge people to get there early. I had them, I had people lining up and signing in at five-thirty, five o'clock, and the place was packed. Remember, now, at that, at that meeting, we were dealing with marijuana.
Well, they were just chill, they had nowhere else to go. Bought their snacks and came along.
It was a ban on retail sales.
They served Fritos and everyone was happy.
Yep, there you go.
Okay. So, the new...
You know, was there any, was there any discussion about that in the Survey Monkey that we sent out about town meeting?
I don't recall if there was any specific on the operating thing.
I don't remember.
I think they were more dealt with whether you wanted to stick with the Saturdays or go back to evenings.
But they did have time questions.
They did. It was to shorten it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, they recommended we do the two meetings to shorten it up.
Yeah.
In fact. Okay, so this, this article language has been amended to insert, well, just, it's short, so it'll say, "Shall the town of Yarmouth be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued to pay an eighteen million, million seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollar portion of the total cost of constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new Department of Public Works garage and office space to be located at 507 Buck Island Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. 02673, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto." And then, yes or no? And then, on the point Tracy made with publication, and it says, "And also by publication in the Yarmouth Register or Cape Cod Times at fourteen days before the time of holding said meeting," as it foresaid, so, looks good.
Can you make a motion to approve that?
Sure. You're making a motion to approve this amended ballot language. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
So, so there is no up-to in there?
No.
No, it's going to be the stated number of, the same as in the warrant, eighteen million, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
And the publication was rectified to say fourteen days prior to the meeting. So, we have a motion, who seconded that? Mark? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, that passes four to zero. Okay, good.
Thank you. No, I don't, you don't actually, you gotta, you signed it right here, the signature page right there.
We're all done with town council?
All done, you're all done.
No questions?
Good night, we're done with you.
Twenty-four, yeah, take, take all of it you want.
Thanks for being here, have a safe ride back. Boarding committee actions.
If you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before we go forward, I didn't know, I do have the debt schedules on the building, on twenty-five and thirty-year borrowing, if you wanted a brief commentary from the Finance Director on that?
Okay.
Or just put them in your hands and you can, we could talk about it next meeting?
What would be your preference? You want to defer to the next meeting, take the copies? Norm's saying, yeah, why don't you pass the, those out and we'll put that on the next agenda, how's that?
That sounds great.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks.
Mark, you have some appointments.
Do we have, are we doing budget policy, or is that...
Oh, jeez, yeah, that was kind of taken out of order, so the budget policy is in the packet.
Oh, no, we skipped that, yeah, issues, budget policy for FY21, no, we skipped that to get to the...
Right.
The matters that town council was going to help us with.
So, it's the same standard policy that we've had the last two consecutive years, that's just the dates have been changed, and also, there's a budget schedule calendar that goes with that, and I believe Rich has one amendment that will be made to the calendar based on feedback from Capitol Budget today.
Anybody want to be heard on the policy statement?
I do. I'm concerned with Section Two with regard to the increase. I mentioned in an email to you, Mike, and to Dan today, you know, I've heard from a many number of people that are feeling a lot of distress with their, their tax burden and with the continuation of two and a half percent increases, people that are having to consider whether they can remain in Yarmouth. And whose incomes are, are not going up by two and a half percent. And I guess, you know, one of the things I had asked was, do we have a report showing what our revenues were for the last several years? And Ed sent me a report, Ed Centio sent me a report on that. And I guess I was a little surprised by the fact that our revenue budget for 2020 budget was less than 2019, I'm sorry, not less than, yeah, less than 2019 budget for, for local receipts, and about two million dollars less than the actuals in 2018 and, and nineteen. Actually, it's almost three million dollars less than 2018, and, you know, if you look at the actuals for 2019, our revenue budget is, for 2020, was eighteen million, one ninety-nine, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Our actual revenues are twenty-one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so our budget effectively was lower by about three million dollars than what it actually, our revenues actually came in at. And that has certainly resulted in, in, at least contributes significantly to our free What I, what I was really disappointed with was the fact that our budget projection for 2020 was ten thousand dollars less than our budget for 2019, and that was in face of four years of continual one million dollar increases in actual revenues. And so, it just seems to me we've been very conservative in our revenue projections. And as I went down the line, it appears to me that we could have easily bumped up our revenue projections for 2020 by a million, three hundred thousand dollars. And I think we need a statement in our budget directive that recognizes that we need to see a full budget, including, including all revenue projections, and that those... And as I went down the line, it appears to me that we could have easily bumped up our revenue projections for 2020 by $1,300,000. And I think we need a statement in our budget directive that recognizes that we need to see a full budget, including, including all revenue projections, and that those revenue projections have gotta be more in line with the actual experience. A million three difference would have eliminated so much angst at the end of last year in terms of budget increases. And, you know, a 2% increase in, in our, our total budget is, what, about $1 million for our municipal side? So, you know, it, it looks to me like our, our, our budget could have been, instead of a two and a half percent increase in all expenses, a one and a half percent increase in all expenses, and we still would have had plenty of room. So, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned about the continual uptick at two and a half percent rate in our expenditures, as expressed in our policy statement. And when our revenues have been increasing, and we, and, you know, we've tucked that away into stabilization funds for a few years, and, and I agree with that, I'm not, not disputing the need to do that. But now is the time, I think, to, to make our revenue projections more in line with the, the trends, and to give the benefit of that trend to our taxpayers. So, you know, and not, not end up with a huge free cash surplus at the end of the year, but rather, leave the money in our taxpayers' pockets.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know this information was sent to us, but I wasn't necessarily prepared to have a conversation or a discussion about revenue estimates and how we go about doing it. I think it's a valid point. What I'd like to do is, is maybe at least not vote on this policy or act on this policy until we have a chance to kinda get, get up to speed a little bit more with some of the points that Norm made. I think there's some, these are important points, and I'd like to make sure that we all have the opportunity to have not only a chance to review the numbers, but also maybe have a discussion with our finance team on the estimating, because we're talking about a practice over several years. So, I think it warrants a bit more discussion rather than anything I'm prepared to have tonight. I'm, I'm looking at this three-page document in front of me, or a four-page document, thinking that this is what we're gonna talk about. I'm not suggesting that the points that are made are not important ones, they are. But I think we all should be sort of working from a certain learning curve so that we can all participate in this discussion.
But to, to, to the point, I'm, I'm comfortable with this policy statement the way it's written. I understand Norm's points. There's a lot of variables that go into projecting, and I'm sure there's rationale as to why they did their budget estimates at the numbers that they did. But this clearly says that we take a conservative approach, and it may include an increase of up to two and a half percent, up to, may.
And we changed that a few years ago.
So, I mean, as we, as we hone in on our budget, I think that that discussion is valid, but in terms of the statement in general, to go and disperse to our staff, I think that that is our policy, is that we would like them to be conservative and do it within the constraints of two and a half, and, you know, if we get to the point where we, that doesn't preclude us from saying, okay, let's look at the estimates at budget time and not increase the two and a half percent levy, that doesn't, we still could do that.
So, since I've arrived, it was explained to me that the policy on revenue projection has been 95% average of the prior year actual. That is conservative, and where I came from, we used to do 98 or 99%, which, in the beginning part of a budget process, allowed you to have a little bit more flexibility, and I came from a community that rarely taxed at two and a half percent. So, that's more of a political question for the policymakers than it is for me to answer, but I do need clear direction as to how we can craft that, and certainly, as we go down, we can provide a couple of scenarios at like 98% of revenue actuals, and calibrate what the budget would look like, like that, and then that way, you could see how much levy capacity we would need to make to meet our obligations at that point. So, there's a variety of different ways, and, you know, my own personal philosophy on free cash was that if you paid your bills and you were moving your community forward, if you had some money left over, I share Selectman Holcomb's point of view, that largely that came from the taxpayers, and if you're in a position to send some back, you ought to. But that's my own personal philosophy on the topic. But I, I need, in the position I'm in, clear direction from the board as to how you'd like us to address those revenue issues. I am very carefully monitoring excise tax, I, I talk about this all the time. That is one of the first canaries in the coal mine. When you, when the budget starts to go soft, you see it usually in your excise tax numbers, and I don't think the year-over-year growth was as significant, and there's been some, some conversation, GDP's been a little bit off, and we've heard some nervousness on the Cape about all the taxation that came to us. So, I, I can't find fault with a very conservative philosophy that the town's taken, it's definitely demonstrated, we've come back in a really robust fashion, I think, from the, from the recession, the depths of the recession, but to Selectman Holcomb's point is, there comes a time for policymakers to decide the level of taxation, when maybe the community's had enough, and that maybe now is the time.
Well, we have some projects, we have to, you know, we're looking at the DPW, we're looking at a school project, if not two. I mean, we have to be very, very cognizant on the needs and the, as he pointed out, the people that are really struggling, and they've already, you know, they've already seen increases, so.
One of the big wild cards since I've been in town, that's really been difficult to manage, is clearly the DY school budget. So, hopefully, if we get this new agreement over the finish line, and we get true, meaningful relief, like what's being talked about with the new Ed reform bill coming to town, perhaps over the next three to five years, that big elephant in the room, if you will, will be restrained to some degree, and then we could actually have a more robust conversation about property tax relief. This isn't the only problem in communities, I, I think many, in the last 15 years, have gone from some number of like, less than 30% of your community financed off property tax, to somewhere closer to 50% now. So, just about every community in the Commonwealth is struggling with the same conversation we're having here tonight.
I'm making a motion to support and vote to recommend the policies, Selectman policy statement put in front of us for FY 2021.
May I have further discussion?
We have a second? We have no second. Let's go back to Norm's point for a minute. Norm, what, how far back did they go in terms of giving you those numbers? How many years?
2016.
Oh, 2016?
Right.
16 through 20?
That's correct. Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Well, 2020 is a budget projection--
Right.
--at this stage, but 2019 included the actuals through June 30th. And during that, in 2016, the total of, not including septicage, because that's an enterprise fund, but local receipts were 19.3 million in 2016, they were 21.3 million in 2019, so that's an increase of about $2 million or 10% over that period of time. And, but, when you look at our, our full-year budget for 2019, it was 18.2 million. So, it was less than even 2016 actuals. And our 2020 budget was 18, 18.2 million as well. So, that's even less than 2016. Again, we did have discussion about those, and I'm not implying that that was done, you know, behind some screen, and, you know, with bells and whistles and all that, not implying that. We had a, a policy in which we were carefully adding to our stabilization funds so that our future would not be mortgaged. So, you know, we, we had good reasoning for doing that in a period of time. But our, we have a very healthy free cash balance this year, and again, I think it's time that we take a different tack with regard to our revenue projections. Not suggesting that, that we make a wholesale move to, to budgeting at the same amount as we had for 2019 actuals, but someplace in between, and I, as I said, I, I think we certainly could absorb another million three, and that would have a significant favorable impact for our taxpayers.
How do you feel about--
I think the statement--
Number nine, Norm, with, in, in the context of what you said, would you make any changes to number nine with committing free cash of $1 million in unrestricted stabilization?
Up to? No. I, I think the statement says up to, I think that's fine, you know, I think it's whatever we can do, but, but I think that there needs to be, in my view, some additional wording in, in paragraph two. And, and I think the additional wording is something, to the point that revenue projections should be constructed and presented to the board for inclusion in the budget, so that we can, because typically, we don't look at these, we don't look at this as part of our budget discussion.
We have the estimated revenue receipts, sure we do.
Always.
Yeah. But we, like I said, it's been based on 95%.
Right.
A very conservative approach, and some, some communities really push the envelope on there.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting that we, we go overboard on--
No, we could certainly do something like 90, could give you like a 98% look at what it would look like, you know?
Well, how, how urgent is it to get some action on this?
Well, I'd like to at least get this component off, so I can get the instructions out to the department heads, they're already starting to do salary estimations and whatnot, and we're only, we're like one meeting scheduled behind anyways. But I mean, as it relates, if you wanted to give some, we won't get to the point of needing to know a revenue estimate construct that you would like to use for another month or thereabouts. So, if you would like to give that some thought, we can have a further discussion, perhaps after town meeting on that, but certainly, by the time we put the budget together, I'm gonna, I'm due to deliver it to you by the calendar before the end of December, and that would be like the last big component that needs to be filled in before we deliver it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman? Well, with respect to revenue estimating, I'm, if we're going to revisit that and look at that, I think we need more time. From the way in which the estimating policy is characterized tonight, it's a very sound approach in terms of financial management. I don't, I don't want anybody to think differently. This is, falls within the guidelines of the Department of Revenue and other people that work with municipalities on finances. This is a sound approach to financial management, and I would be, be very reluctant to change. But when I look at some of the numbers here that have been identified, I'm looking at the number one issue in town that we have to address, and that's clean water. And I honestly believe that, to the extent, and again, it follows a little bit on some of your commentary, Norm, about making sure that we deal with some of the big-ticket items that are facing us straight in the face. This board stepped up on OPEB, it's done it on other things. I think I would like, to the extent that we can make a change or adjustment, I think it's worth discussing, how can we adjust this a bit to make clean water a priority? I know Tracy has mentioned this at other meetings about the importance of using some of that short-term rental money in a, in a, in a capital account or a stabilization account. I think that's worth, before, before we close the books on this policy, I'd like to at least have more discussion on how clean water expenses, how this could perhaps be addressed a bit more, because I'm looking at it, and it's, it's not here. And I think, quite frankly, this is, this is a good document, I'm not critical of, of much of it at all, 95% of it is, is right on target. My only issue is, is given what we're facing right now with respect to clean water, and some of the expenses associated with that, those infrastructure costs, maybe we need to find a way to address in the statement that crisis, or that challenge that's confronting us as well. Maybe we need to allocate a portion of money for those, for that purpose.
I, you know, I'm certainly not interested in proposing an allocation of general fund revenues currently existing to wastewater. I think that that, taking tax dollars from people who are not going to participate in wastewater, and who believe that they will have their own costs in their private sewer septic systems, is something that is a policy issue that I think has been addressed by town, by the town voters previously. And I, and this, we're not talking about incremental revenues, which is taxes that have been passed that we have not yet started to realize, we're not talking about that. We're talking about existing revenues on existing tax policies, and, and existing fees. And I, I think those should be returned to the taxpayers.
Well, I don't think we're gonna resolve anything on, on this number two tonight, unless we include some generic language that talks about consideration or reassessment of revenues, projected revenues, that would go into this equation. In terms of a specific number or percentage, I think Mark's right when he says we would have to have a separate agenda item on this, and to get some presentations probably from, from staff, and particularly Ed Centio, and then get Norm's analysis, and then his policy decisions, as Norm just raised, whether you should be using general revenues for things like wastewater, or whether wastewater is such an important project that, that militates against what he said, so.
Well, Dan has a staff that has, needs direction on where to go, and there's nothing in that policy that's been given to us that precludes any of that on how they build their budget, how we fund it, and how it's funded is a completely separate conversation.
I think what Norm's saying, and Norm certainly can speak for himself, but I think what he's saying is the, the revenue projections, which are part of, part and parcel of the budget, are not really included in item two, is that your position, Norm?
That's correct.
So, I guess if we wanna have something done for tonight, if we added some language to that effect, that, that the departments will justify, you know, revenue--
The easiest way to do it, frankly, if we've been using 95% average on revenue receipts, tell me 98%, and we'll do it 98%.
Well, we can, I don't think we can do that with, I mean, that's kinda the rabbit's foot approach. I, I think you gotta have some serious discussion about how it is that you would arrive at a 98%, and what effect that would have on all these other allocations that have been made out of free cash.
No, it won't, it won't have that, it's, it's part of, so I, when I would do this before, I would provide tax relief at the time in which you set the tax rate, because one of the challenges with this form of government is you only have typically one bite at the apple on your appropriation, which is at town meeting. So, if you understood it, and some communities do, they're at fall town meeting with supplemental appropriations. This town has done an exceptional job, not having ever had that problem in recent memories, okay? That being said, my own personal, very conservative approach on this topic is, it's best to be conservative on these revenue receipts, because you never really know, as, you know, we're putting this thing together, you know, 18 months before, you'll see a final report as it relates to the actuals, okay? So, I would never want to be short on that, because it's, it's really problematic to get additional money if you run short. Second to that is, at the end of the year, when you're, when you're looking at the books and before you set the tax rate, you can put the money back into that process to reduce the two and a half percent allocation, and routinely, that's how the community I came from would do this, we would make a recommendation to the legislative body to funnel back in $2 million, or $1.5 million, or $2.5 million to reduce the levy raise-- raise that was going to be done. That is the safest way to ensure that you do it, such that you don't run short of your annual appropriation. And that is my one concern, is because we only have one, maybe two chances for an appropriation, I would not ever want to run short. And because of the DY budget wildcard, and I don't believe they've settled their contract situation yet.
We haven't.
Right. So we continue to be in a scenario where we're going to be very concerned as we move through the winter as to what that ramification would look like, you know? We're in pretty good shape contract side here. We do have some that have to go down that road a little bit later this year. But personally, my own belief is the better time to do this is at the end of the cycle, when you know how much money is in the bank.
Yeah, I think the-- what I am very concerned about is that we commit to funding expenses out of an increase in revenues, revenue projections, that is certainly already there and eat up what I think could be money that should be returned to the taxpayers. You know, I think we've got to be very careful in our projections of expenses that we don't have-- that we don't-- let's say we have an increase in utilities or pension and health and general insurance and those line items that way exceeds 2.5%. We've got to come up with that money someplace else.
Well, we'll know those before we actually present the final budget to the voters. So that's, you know, that's one of those things as we make last-minute adjustments going at the Springtown meeting. That is certainly something that we deal with. And then if it looks like, you know, I'm just going to use this as a complete hypothetical, but say you were at 2.5% and you needed to find some extra money because you had a retirement assessment or a health insurance assessment that was larger than you had estimated, then you would look to your revenue receipts to address that that way. But you can't fudge it to the point where it's not realistic either. I mean, the DOR will review that. So, you know, I mean, I've seen in the last downfall in '07, '08, precipitous decline of excise tax was gargantuan year over year. And that's the type of thing that, you know, you guard against that. But, you know, we do have generally pretty good estimates going in. But in the end, that's why it's nice to have some extra free cash and some stabilization, that if your appropriation fell really short, you'd have those things to fall back on. But this, like I said, this form of government, because we have such a limited chance to do an appropriation, is you don't want to run short. That's why I think the town's been so conservative.
I guess the other concern I have is that the communication or conversation seems to be that, well, 2.5% is affordable. And it's not affordable for many of our taxpayers in this town. And I think we've got to dispense with that assumption that our taxpayers can absorb continual increases in our budget of 2.5%. And, you know, and I guess that's the reason, you know, we put in wording of "up to," but it's, you know, the "up to" is with regard to DY and Cape Cod Tech.
It's the town budget.
Doesn't say that.
It does.
It says, "will provide for essential town services." It does not say, "may include an increase for town services of that amount." It says, "may include an increase of up to 2.5% for DY and Cape Cod." So it does not provide for 2.5% increase in general town services.
So what's your argument, Dan?
Well, because the conversation has been otherwise.
Well, I think when all the puzzle pieces fit together, like I said, the DY budget has been a buster for us.
Right.
If you took that scenario out of the equation, or if they were comfortably within, like, you know, similar to Cape Tech has been very comfortable with year-over-year appropriation since I've been here. We don't have that same reliability. So, you know, that is an enormous number that we've had to pick up the pieces on, not leaving much on the town side. And I think you've heard, you know, from YPD, there's always an increased pressure there. YFD is telling me they would like to fund four additional positions based on call vibe. You know, we've really held the wall back a little bit on all these requests, but at some point, yeah, certainly, you know, the police appropriation for expenses has been hovering around $200,000 for maybe longer than before I even arrived here in town.
And we have contractual obligations.
And we do. And, you know, so there's all of those pressures that come at us at different ways. And I've, like I said, my own personal philosophy is I've never guaranteed 2.5% to anybody.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no motion and no second or no suggestion, can we just move on? We're not going anywhere.
Well, I think the discussion is beneficial, because we got to resolve this, if not tonight, at some point in time.
Right.
And I agree with you that we have to conclude this shortly.
Well, what's the suggestion? How do we resolve it?
Well, I want to see what-- I guess that's the point. I want to see what people think they want to do from here.
You know, I guess at this point, I would look to Dan and the staff to provide alternate scenarios to the typical approach that we've had in the past and with some alternate calculations that-- from the 95%. I don't believe we were at the 95% last year. I don't think the 2020 budget was constructed at that level.
Yeah, and we built it. I'm pretty sure that it was, because that's the guidance that I've operated since I've been here.
Well, I don't know how it came out at less than the previous year budget.
Because I think you're looking at the recap at the end of the year. I'd have to-- Ed generated that report, so that may be somewhat different than the estimates that we went into the budget with.
I don't know. All I'm saying is that--
That's the report that we send to you all every month.
Right.
Which shows the revenue trend amount.
Yeah. What was the percentage you used last year?
Well, we were up to exactly 95%, but then, because we didn't need as much money because of the DY situation, what I did instead of having excess levy capacity was reduce the local receipts. And that was in the email that I sent you today to you and the chairman.
So since 2016--
Did we get this email?
No, I'll send it to you as well.
I think if you could send it to all the board members, that would be great.
Yeah, because the tax rate went from $10.10 down to 10 cents.
Yeah.
Since 2016, have you applied the same rate of 95%?
We have been around that amount, because that's in your financial policies. And it was on a three-year basis.
What does that mean, on a three-year basis?
On an average of a three-year basis, applying 95%. So if you could reread that email, and then we could dialogue about it, that would be great.
So you're saying that, let's say, in this year, you did a projection, it would be on an average of the prior three years at 95%? Is that how you did it?
Correct. And then we have to look at, as Town Administrator Knappik said, where was motor vehicle excise? Motor vehicle excise was at 96%. When we went through the recession and we had to lay off individuals in the town, motor vehicle excise dropped precipitously. And that's why Finance Department is down 10% from where we were in 2010. And we haven't hired any additional staff. We're looking out for those trends. I think you probably all have heard about the fact that the yield curve is inverted. The yield curve being inverted, and the last seven times it's happened, has forecasted a recession. So, you know, you have to take into consideration all of those factors. Again, having gone through significant issues like that in my time here, and having to deal with, you know, the reduction in staff and existing staff taking on more work, I'm very keenly aware of what happened when your local receipts go down.
Before you go, Norm, I just have one other question. What if any effect by adjusting this-- and I'm not suggesting you should, I'm just asking this theoretical question to 90, say, 97.5, 98%-- what effect, if any, would that have on your position with bond rating?
You know, one of the-- the only item where we're not the highest rating possible is the amount of free cash we spin off. That's where we're deficient. At the time, we were also deficient because the local economy score was down. That's why we got--
You're saying it could have a negative effect in there, right?
That is the only factor where we have a negative effect. Management is at the highest level. Our reserve policies are at the highest level. All of that is in great shape, except for the amount of leeway that we have in our expense budget.
Okay, go ahead, Norm.
Okay. 5% of our local receipts is about $1 million. The 2017 to 2019 revenues were roughly $21 million average.
Sure.
So if we budgeted at 5% less than that, it would be at 19-- I'm sorry, $20 million. That isn't where we budgeted. We budgeted at 18.2 million.
Okay.
And all I'm suggesting--
Can we have a conversation tomorrow?
Sure.
Do you have time?
Sure.
All right.
I don't know if I do tomorrow, but--
10, 11 o'clock at night?
Maybe able to.
That's how long I work. 12 o'clock if you want. 8 o'clock in the morning, anytime.
I can't do it at 8 o'clock in the morning, no. It'll have to be sometime in the afternoon.
Yeah, Saturday or Sunday. I'm here.
Can we carry this discussion on this over to the next meeting? I don't want to bring it over a long time to make a federal case out of it, but can we just--
It'll appear again on the next agenda.
Can we put this on the next agenda to wrap it up?
Yep. We'll give you some revenue trend reports, too.
Chairman, if I may, as well. Just a consideration. All these questions with regards to the revenue side of the budget, I've worked with Ed for a number of years, and we've got great explanations and reasons for a lot of it, and it's a matter of communicating that. But what's in front of you and what the direction that we need on the budget for the departments is really on the expenditure side, which I believe almost all of these points are addressing the expenditure side for departmental guidance. So perhaps a solution for moving forward would be to give some guidance on the expenditure side with the understanding that we need to get to the information on the revenue side and how we actually fund the budget once we come up with the expenses.
I have a quick question for Rich and for Dan. Are we talking about in terms of municipal budgets sticking within the 2.5%? Is that what we're-- is that the recommendation here?
Well, yeah. So the recommendation in general that goes out to the departments is adjust for salary obligations based on contracts?
Yeah.
And level fund expenses. If you have something that's pressing, that you need to address from an appropriation beyond your normal expenditure, you need to come in and see me about that. And then if that's the case, we find an offset. So that's the general-- that's how we frame it every year since I've been here.
I don't have any problem with that communication.
Neither do I. And I think that's-- and I think on the expenditure side, I think-- would you say this, Mr. Chairman, that we're all in agreement with that?
Yes.
And that's what I'm suggesting. And then we get to the question that Solomon Holcomb has and others as to how we're funding that, and we can still have that discussion. Nothing here precludes that.
Right. I think the thing-- the two key things that I just want to leave behind before we close this topic is that I think the revenue conversation is a good one. I think it's healthy. I just want to have access to the information that everybody else has.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't want to be sitting here blind with a conversation going on that I know very little about. So I think in the future, it would be helpful to get that kind of information for everybody. So I look forward to seeing what's been distributed and going over it. The other point that I want to make is that I have nothing but praise for the town's financial team. The revenue estimating is consistent with generally accepted, good financial practices. And I think it's because this town has been so well-managed by this finance team that we're in the situation that we're in right now, where we have some resources that's worth talking about in terms of how best to utilize those. The only thing that I'm suggesting is that since we're talking about FY '21 is going in, is there a way-- and this is maybe where the board also has to have a separate discussion-- given clean water and the infrastructure costs going forward, would it make sense to set aside funds for stabilization capital related to water and wastewater infrastructure? We have to have this conversation. Again, we're looking at FY '21. I'm going to keep raising it, keep talking about it. I'll keep putting wastewater financing on the agenda. In the cost recovery plan, we do allocate a certain amount of cost recovery to utilizing local receipts. I don't see this as alien from this topic. I think it's entirely germane. So I think it's worth a healthy discussion among members of this board on the revenue side as to how best to allocate some of those dollars, knowing how critical clean water and wastewater is. So I'm going to keep bringing this up until we can get some consensus or at least some closure on it.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, I could also say, again, the clean water issue is while important, we'll address it, is not part of the day-to-day operating budget guidance that we need for the departments. And I certainly, as I work with Ed and the Town Administrator on the budget, we already had a commitment in, and the financing plan did identify local receipts as a funding source, but to the extent they were new. And so as we go through this upcoming process, to Solomon Holcomb's point and to Solomon Forrest's point, I think we can accommodate both those viewpoints by carving out new revenues going towards wastewater. But I don't think either of those preclude providing guidance to the departments.
Well done.
So what do you want to do? Do you want to defer this to--
I think we should bring this up at another meeting. And I think, to the extent that the board has provided guidance on the expenditure side so that they can start working with department heads on the budget.
I'm fine with this. I think we need to have further discussion on revenues. I think it stands as fine, but I think we need to have further discussion on the revenues with regard--
When you say this is fine as it stands, do you want to approve this and then have a follow-up discussion on revenues? Or do you want to wait until you've got--
That would be my preference at this stage, yes.
Is that we endorse this?
What's that?
Approve this? This is what--
Right.
All right. So you're making a motion to that effect, Norm?
Yes.
Then we approve this, Solomon's policy statement dated September 24, 2019. Okay, you have a second?
I'll second it, but I want to stress again, I anticipate there will be new receipts in FY '21. My hope is that we can find ways to start allocating funds for clean water as consistent with the cost recovery plan.
Part of our work on the revenue side that will be disgusting will be what's our projection for short-term rental taxes, what's new versus what's the old tax, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to insist on finding a way we can identify what that number is.
We'll be getting actual reports from the Department of Revenue on actual collections, on what's new versus what's existed in the past.
I think as a board, we need to talk about that, though. I think that's right. I think you're right. Yes, I agree.
Very good. So I've got a second here.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the Solomon's policy statement of September 24, 2019, as it is written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The pass is three to zero, which is unanimous vote. Okay. I thought that would only take a couple minutes.
Actually, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think--
No, it was good discussion.
I think this is all very, very helpful discussion. I think each of the points brought up were very legitimate, are entirely appropriate, and it's worth a discussion.
I agree.
And sometimes, financial management and revenue estimating can be an arcane and sometimes confusing and complicated business. But like I said, in this town, I think they do a remarkable job. So-- but I'm anxious to get into the weeds with you, Norm. All right?
Okay.
Okay, good. I'll stay out of them.
[laughing]
Board and committee actions, committee appointments.
Okay.
I think we have some.
Yeah, you've got a fairly full packet of candidates for a number of positions. Let's start with Planning Board. Ready?
Ready.
All right. So we have before us, I'm recommending that Joanne Crowley and Chris Vincent be-- both of them be reappointed as regular members to the Planning Board for three-year terms running through July 2022.
Well, go ahead. Norm moves that appointment. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is for, um, a woman named Elizabeth Hartsgrove. Some of you may be familiar with this woman.
Yeah, she used to be administrative assistant to our town administrator.
She's the Assistant Planning Director for the town of Barnstable, and she's moved back to Yarmouth.
She moved back to Yarmouth.
So we've recruited her to come back and serve on the Planning Board as a regular member, and this will be for an appointment for three years running through July 2022.
I'll move that appointment.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
It carries. Motion carries.
She was instrumental in, uh, getting the, um, what do you call the facings on the electrical boxes all over town, the, right?
Right, right. She has, yeah, she can, it's amazing. She can do amazing work, and she's doing great things in the town of Barnstable, so having her on the Planning Board is gonna be a huge asset. The next item before you is, um-
Procing.
The, no, Community Preservation Committee. This would be to reappoint Mary Ann Walsh as the Housing Authority representative to the Community Preservation Committee. And this is for a three-year term running through July 2022.
I'll move that appointment.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now for the, uh, the big-ticket item of the evening. Why Jane is here at this late hour to fill in anything that I might miss or, um, need some help on. So this is the Library Planning Committee that the board established sometime back to provide guidance and help facilitate consensus on recommendations on our, our long-term facility needs with respect to libraries. So, um, we had a number of applicants to serve, and so I'm presenting to you George Bovino and Linda Callahan, uh, and I'm gonna present them in the order of the staggered terms. So we'll start with the three-year terms, the two-year terms, and the one-year terms. So George Bovino and Linda Callahan for a three-year term expiring September 2022.
I'll move those appointments.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. The next, uh, group of candidates would be Anne Marie Gavin, Susan Loveland, and Will Rubenstein for two-year terms ending in September 2021.
So we'll move those appointments as well.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And then Richard Simon and Jack Moylan, uh, to be, to serve on the Library Planning Committee for one-year terms ending in September 2020.
I'll move those appointments.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, uh, we had a, uh, late entry in, but right after the packet was done, Angela, her last name?
Carbone.
Carbone.
If I may, Mr. Forrest, Buckley, is Buckley part of?
First Buckley was-
Buckley is-
Nina, Callahan.
Buckley is not, was not because Buckley dropped out.
Okay.
All right, so-
Yep, perfect.
So just so that you have that. Any other?
Nope, that was it, just following along.
Okay. So Angela Carbone. Now, you have to help me, Jane. She did a great interview. She's terrific for library stuff.
The town library board, she wants to be on the library board, which also has an open spot.
They have an opening? Right.
We thought we, we would talk about that at the next meeting.
I think I should bring that up. We'll get you some background on her for the next meeting. I know something was sent out by email today, but we'll put it in the packet again, and we'll bring her up, uh, at our next meeting. So, let me see it. I'm, I'm glad that's worked out. She's interviewed very well. Okay, what else do we have? I think that concludes the, uh, the committees. I think that's it. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, approval of minutes for March 19th, 2009, and April 9th, 2019.
I move to approve.
Move a second?
Second.
Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's, passes unanimously in executive session minutes for July 16, July 30, and August 13th, and also August 27th of 2019.
I move we approve this. Second.
Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. Upcoming agenda review. We don't meet next week, do we?
Nope.
I don't think so.
Uh, October 8th. So, a quick question I have for you on the 8th is the Veterans Beach sticker policy. We're gonna bring that back, but we're gonna bring it back as a proposal to provide a percentage discount. We're gonna leave that discount blank. We're gonna, it's a fee, so we're gonna have to have two hearings on that by your own rules. So it'll start on the 8th. So somewhere between, I mean, there's obviously gonna be a revenue impact to this, but we were thinking, Mr. Colby left, but I think somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, 20% or thereabouts as a discount to trial the, because we don't know how many people would take advantage. We do know there's a lot of, um, people with veteran status in town, and we also would frame the language such that it, it met the standard for honorably discharged veteran status. These, these are all commentary that was picked up from the last time we brought that forward to you.
That's great.
But it's, um, kinda timely because, uh, we gotta get in position to get the sticker run in, uh, the software formatted, so.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be, oh, that's just-
On the, on the 8th.
8th, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, you got, only got one page of the-
And then the bottle, uh, single-use, uh, plastic bottle band.
Is that coming up?
That's on the 8th, yeah. Rich, is there a, an issue with the solar lease? Will that be, uh, I saw some last-minute hang-ups on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the timing of the latest issue is, but, um, we do need to present to you leases for the proposal for 50 Workshop Road ground mount solar array. And so the idea would be to give you a presentation on that and a draft of the leases, and then a second meeting to actually vote on it, so you'd have some time to consider. But there was a snafu just late last week on that, which I'm not, where I think we're still waiting from the vendor to respond.
The size of the, uh, array is a problem for Eversource, apparently, the way in which we're gonna do the credit, so.
Hmm.
They always seem to have problems with these solar projects, don't they?
Yeah.
Something, yeah, of course.
Go figure, right?
CIVEC has also asked for a position on the agenda for their adder, their next round of, uh, of adder discussion, so we should have something. That's, that's all kinda coming together. They can send to us in emails this week.
Great.
Permitting guide should be available. The other one is the Ocean Club. I've spoke to this before. I'm not sure, I'd probably want to put that on when Jay's gonna be back. That's another licensing agreement down on South Shore Drive. It's, uh, like a retaining wall that was built back in the 1950s, a little sliver of town property. In order to do their construction, they would, they need some authorization from the town to make it, uh, like it's okay to be on town property, and that's in a license agreement like you saw tonight. So we met with the applicant tonight, or earlier today, and, um, it, it would be like a revocable license situation. The only other way to do this for them would be to, um, get authorization from town meeting to do a, a sale or lease of property, and then have them respond to an RFP. And that seems to be a very cumbersome process for a very little amount of, of footage on the, on the properties. Probably, uh, less than half the square footage of this room, I'd be willing to bet. It's a very tiny amount, so.
Is there going to be revenue associated with this license?
Well, that's part of a discussion that you could have as it relates. I mean, it has been like this for a very long time, and, and it only recently came to light that it was encroached on, on town property. But it is a C-wall that they need to rebuild, I guess, is what the end story is on it, so.
Well, you could give them a, a license, which is basically just mere permission to use-
That's correct.
That's revocable at the will of the town.
That's correct.
I guess you could give them a, a lease as well.
I believe the lease, though, as a town, of, of real property would have to go to-
Would have to have a value.
Well, it'd have to have a value, but it has to be authorized by town meeting, which this would not.
You probably have an appraisal, too.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Well, the other thing to consider, I'm just using as a, as a model, the, you know, the licenses that the Commonwealth issues for the use of public tidelands or other public property. I mean, those are, those are relatively common, so this is an area that has significant public access. I don't know if there's a potential public access benefit.
I think there are two different kinds of licenses, though. When you get a license, usually like, say for a dock, you have the right to keep perpetually use, you have, you have a vested-
No, I understand, I understand.
With a, with a license, well, that permits use. It gives the person using it the legal authority to do it.
Right.
But it doesn't give them any vested property rights.
Right.
So that, that owner can say, you know, after a year, six months, tomorrow, stop. And it also prohibits the person using it for claiming that they own it by adverse possession.
Right.
Because adverse possession is kind of a trespassory use, whereas with a license, the person acknowledges that you've given them permission, and therefore, it's not adverse.
Interestingly enough, there was a case that was explained to us today by the engineer in Brewster, that the town authorized a license in Brewster to a private property owner that has encroached on town property. I said, so why don't you send that over to me and I'll take a look at that language and see what Brewster did. So I know-
Is it a cost?
I don't know, I'm gonna find all that information out, so.
Guy didn't know about the fee.
But that's, uh, that's something I'll probably wait to bring the applicant in front of you, and when Jay comes back, and he can walk you through that, so.
Is it, is the site something that displaces any public use of public-
Uh, no, it's, it literally, it's, it's literally like the matter of, maybe it's, the, the wall is, uh, I wanna say it's like 100 feet long, and it's maybe on town property by a foot.
I see.
That's all?
Yeah, it's tiny, really tiny, yeah. We're gonna give you a view coming up from the water, looking at it, so you'll get a good idea of what it's all about.
So are we gonna, what else are we gonna put on for the 8th?
Uh, so the permitting guide has been, uh, this is a long-awaited goal that, uh, to help streamline the process of applying for different permits in town. The guide has been in a finished format and draft side for quite some time, and they'll be in front of you, uh, on the 8th as well, so, um, I'm gonna, I'm trying to keep these meetings in the three-hour timeframe as much as possible, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I will mention on October 22nd, it was brought to my attention that we will need a golf fee increase. This is on cart fees and things like, related to that, because we're up for a new lease for that equipment, and the price that we presently charge doesn't accommodate the lease agreement. But Scott is ready for a presentation. The, what we did at town meeting was the annual fee for general membership, and then I think it was just like one particular age bracket that, for kids and for seniors. So there was a couple of other fees that need to be voted for a hearing, but he has all that information for you.
So this is not for the next year's increase?
It's not the general membership fee, it's very specific, it's like, like cart fees, there's some other like, what I'd call incidental use of the golf.
So when, when do you anticipate that hearing?
Well, so that's the 22nd would be the first one, and, and the way timing falls, November, we, uh, we decided November 14th, right, is a Thursday night?
Yeah.
So that's when National Golf will be here, and Scott will have the second fee hearing on the 19th. I didn't think doing it on that same night would be, um, so you'll get an idea of the finances of golf by the 14th of November.
So we'll have an idea of what the, the fees should be for the next year, then?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, this is a proposal for next year, that's correct.
But, but-
But it's not the, it's not the general membership fee that was like 1,250 or 1,150 or whatever. It's different fees for, like, one of them was a cart.
So that fee will be decided when?
Oh, on the second meeting. So you'll, you'll have the hearing, and then whatever he's proposing, and on the second meeting, it appears again, uh, November 19th is the second meeting.
So that would, but that will not include the general membership fees?
He's not, I don't believe he's proposing a general membership fee increase at all. That's my understanding. I'll get a memo to you in advance of the 22nd. It was, as it was explained to me, it was the cost to cover, among things, was the lease for the carts, the cart charge, the daily cart charge, whatever that is. I don't know how much that is.
So that lease is up, and there's an increase, and he wants to raise some money to cover that off.
To offset that cost, yeah, so I had a meeting.
Why would we forego a 5% increase?
I, I'm not sure, Norm, to be honest with you. You know, that's something that, uh, you know, he's running the operation over there, and it, it may be that it's calibrated enough to get him through for this upcoming year. I don't know. I don't have that detail.
Okay.
So. But I'm sensitive to the commentary I received, uh, what was it, last night? It seemed like forever ago we were out there, but there's been a lot of commentary.
So this hearing on golf with respect to the latest, um, study is gonna be on the 14th?
On the 14th, and that, there may only be one or two other items that night, because it's a non-normal business night, and I didn't want to keep you out that night.
Is that gonna be a public hearing?
Oh, it's a public meeting, not a hearing, just a meeting.
Public, public meeting.
Yeah. So the report that was generated will come to us, it'll go in the pack, it'll be available for people online, and then, uh, and then, uh, you know, it'll be part of the process.
The reason I ask you that, usually people like the Golf Enterprise Committee and people like that like to be heard on those, in that forum, and-
Yeah. Oh, no, they, you certainly can have that commentary.
I would like to, you know, give them that opportunity if that's what they wish to do.
No, you certainly can take in that feedback after the consultant's report.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Now, one of the things we've done in the past on this type of thing is we've had the consultant provide the report and his findings. You've been given the opportunity to interact with the consultant, and at the next follow-up meeting, we've presented all this stuff to the individual stakeholders, and then they came back to talk to you. So it's a little bit more orderly. But I don't like to publish anything that, you know, it's your domain, so you get to see and hear the report from the consultant first. There's a couple of other things that'll make the list here for next meeting. I know Jeff Colby's gotta come back as a Water Commission update sometime in November. There's a few other things that have been percolating up.
We have off December 24th this year?
Yeah, you want, uh, I think there's a lot of, it's a busy night this year, yeah. You want, I think there's a lot of, it's a busy night this year, yeah.
Mark can cover those meetings.
Yeah. No problem.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right. Individual items. Mark, do you have anything?
No.
Norm?
Just one comment. We had, I think, a great reception at the Bass River Golf Course for members, and I thought that that went off real well. I thought the quality was good, and I think the evening, the weather cooperated, so we had, I think, a really good meeting. And I want to emphasize something, though, about the golf course at Bass River, because I've played there probably two or three times this year. I'm reluctant to go back. Every time I go, my equipment gets coated with geese droppings. My shoes get coated. I pick up a ball that's coated, it gets on my gloves, it gets on the handles of my golf It's extremely frustrating, and, and I know that it's frustrating for our management group as well, but believe me, it's a health problem. And to my way of thinking, whatever we've got to do with state agencies to stress that this is a serious health issue that needs to be addressed in some way, we should do because it's just, you know, you can't wash off your stuff at Bass River, and I certainly can't get it off my golf clubs unless every time I go there, you know, I take home my clubs and wash everything. And believe me, I come back and the wheels of my golf cart are totally coated. And, you know, it's, it's, I know there's been some commentary from some of the other golf groups, but as I said, I'm very reluctant to play there. So, I just wanted to add some emphasis to that, and, you know, it's not an easy problem.
This is the day of the seals and the geese, Norm.
The geese. If we can get the sharks to take out some of those geese, it'd be great.
That's been a problem, Norm, that's been existing for many, many years. I don't golf, but I can tell you, I've coached soccer for over 25 years, and when you first go out in those fields in the spring, especially at Mattakees, D Y, fields like that, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Same thing.
It used to be, I thought...
Kids are running through that stuff and...
Restricted to the spring. It's not. I mean, there's two or three huge flocks that get on the course, and, you know, they, it's, it's disgusting, so.
But they're migratory birds, and I think you have all kinds of federal protections that probably kick in, right, Mark?
They are federally protected species, I understand. Yeah, that's right. So, although there is a hunting season right now, it's a two, two-bird bag limit for the hunter, and then later, a little bit later in the fall, it's, I think it goes to like 15 birds per hunter, so we'll try to make a dent in it later this year if that's politically appropriate.
Should we all go out and hunt?
Well, we have a couple of folks that they like to take advantage of early morning activities at Bass River. I, you know, I share Selectman Holcomb's concerns. I literally just walk off the hole when, when I encounter such obstacles.
Yeah. It's disgusting.
I pick up the ball and move, move on.
Yeah.
These, these poor, these poor kids, they're playing in that stuff and running in there and heading the ball.
Yeah.
Their ball's been traveling through.
Yeah. Just, yeah. Yeah. I didn't even like to think about it.
Maybe we should get into the board of colleague business, right?
Well, we do. We try to run it for dogs.
Mark, why don't you call your friends in Washington and see what you can do?
Throw in a couple seats.
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Okay.